Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. This is a special meeting. It's a continuation of a meeting, actually, regarding the interviews for superintendent candidates. We have two more interviews tonight with Mr. Fuentes, as well as Mr. Lang. Starting a little bit late, so we'd like to begin. Unfortunately, this is not being broadcast live. There are issues with Comcast down on Market Street, which is affecting the broadcast station at Lowell toll of Communications. So with that, let us proceed. Can we please rise? We will begin the meeting by saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Ms. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikicich?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. So as I mentioned, this is the second night of three nights scheduled to conduct five interviews of our finalists. If there's -- last meeting, we went over the ground rules. Recommendations from the personal subcommittees were adopted. So with that, why don't we proceed? Mr. Gilbert, if you bring in the next candidate,
It's Mr. Fred Fuentes, the Executive Director of Educational Options for the Boston Public Schools.
Mr. Fuentes, good evening. My name is Rodney Elliott. I'm the mayor, and I chair the school committee. You can see there are six other members here. Welcome to Lowell and Lowell City Hall. We thank you for expressing interest and submitting an application and going through the process, making it through the first and second round. So first, congratulations. Again, thank you. And the way we have sort of agreed to conduct the interview is to -- you're certainly welcome to an opening statement. Then we will proceed with a 10-minute question-and-answer period from members, and then you're welcome to a closing statement. Okay?
Great, thank you. Let me just -- I'm online. All right, great, thank you. I wanted to think about the opening statement. So I'm thinking about the work of Max DePree. And Max DePree starts with saying, "The first responsibility of any leader is to define the reality. The last responsibility of any leader is to say thank you. In between, the role of that leader is to serve." I believe that at the core of all that we do in education is to serve, to make a significant difference and transform the lives of students, to assist in the goals that parents and community have of creating a very bold, a very fruitful, a very encouraging, and a very powerful experience for students that takes them on through lifelong learning. As a leader, I'm collaborative in my style. I'm passionate about what I do. I'm student-centered in all that I do. I consider family. I consider stakeholders, and I really have a commitment to excellence and to achievement. What I do to make a difference is I look at innovation. I look at creativity. I look at where we are, and I try to create a context from where we are to where we need to go. And I work with people in crafting that type of vision and that type of mission and those types of actions. I am known as a person who has been innovative. I'm recognized as someone who is creative. I'm recognized as someone who is able to make things happen when there are no resources. So that's part of the reality. I'm not going to do a lot of time in this opening statement because I know you have a lot of questions, and I want to be able to be respectful of your time. And probably at the close, if we have time, I'll do more. So thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Gendron, did you want to proceed? Or me? Okay, that's fine with me. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. I appreciate your opening statement. In your letter of introduction, you mentioned organizational change and aligned with some other qualities, qualifications. If you came to Lowell, what, in your limited experience or exposure at this point in time, do you have any thoughts on any organizational change based upon your prior experience that you would introduce in your first 30 days?
I think about three things that are really important for Lowell based on where it is right now. The first action that are really important in terms of organizational, operational change is that we have to have an achievement plan. We have to have a way to address the underperforming, the nine underperforming schools that we currently have. But that's not the overall goal of an achievement plan. It's also to talk about the rigor and the level of work that needs to happen so that we can obtain and move from our status in terms of our state status and in our understanding of what the type of performance that our students can do. Lowell is a cutting-edge city in every other area. It's been a city that has created a great innovation for itself. It's changed from a mill town to become a center of innovation, of technology. Its higher education centers have gone through excellence. There are a number of opportunities and partnerships, entrepreneurial things happening in this whole area and the whole region. How can the school department and how can our schools be part of that? So the first piece of this is looking at this level of achievement so it's in line with the work that we're doing in the city. So that would be the first goal. The second thing that's really vital in the work that we're going to do is creating something that we've been doing in Boston for a number of years called collective impact. Collective impact is developing these partnerships that are essential to make significant differences. And they extend from different types of partners. It can be higher education. It can be business. It can be different sectors that come together, nonprofit, community-based, that make a significant difference in the life and in the type of efforts that we do for our achievement plan. And the third thing that I think is a big challenge that I have heard from all the different stakeholders and from my visit yesterday was that we're seeing a change and a bump in the number of students coming through, and there seems to be some concern about how we're going to be able to cope as a district with the facilities and with the issues that we have in terms of growth. So given that, we need to start doing and start planning. A short-term plan that would do a space matrix and define the areas of utilization in the district, and a long-term where we look at facilities and utilization with the new high school configuration that really allows us to plan more effectively, more efficiently, and also with a venue and with a look toward the 21st century.
Thank you. Can you give me some examples of that space metrics and maybe some experience that you have?
Yes.
Because -- and I just want to give you a little bit more specific so you can focus right in on my answer. So we have a growing enrollment. We know we have a spike that's going to hit our middle schools soon. There's been some discussion about perhaps we are actually in the process of moving into a feasibility study stage with the high school, and can an eighth grade be included as part of that renovation? Because we're really in what I would say we're getting -- we're in a bind when it comes to this spike of middle schoolers hitting and then thereafter. So with that, any experience and how would you try to approach that in a short and long term?
One of the things that we did in the 1980s in Boston under the desegregation plan that responded to Judge Garrity was a clear piece of having and knowing what was the use of every space, every classroom in the district of the 124 schools there. We knew every single classroom, every utilization, every type of program that went into that school, and the number of students that were assigned. So part of that would be to do an inventory similar to your feasibility, but a lot more detailed, to look at each of the characteristics of each of the current spaces we have, the current utilization, the type of programming and program alignment that we have. Because utilization is also linked to type of programming. So if we're having ELL programs, do we have ELL programs that are going like we have now P to four, PK to four schools? What's our alignment with that school and that program with the feeder schools that they work with? And are those programs, are they synchronous or are they asynchronous right now? From what I heard from my visit, they're asynchronous. That a program may start in one school, but the feeder school that follows doesn't necessarily have that program. We'd have to look at that utilization and carve out how that works with two distinct factors. We have to consider the desegregation order that Lowell did agree to when it early on with the consent decree. And the second one, with what we understand is currently how we're doing our districting and how we're doing our assignment of students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I got a lot of questions. I want to check, how am I doing on time, Mr. Cassidy?
Five.
Five, okay. So thank you. And I didn't mean to cut you off, but we have 10 minutes. So thank you, Mr. Fuentes. So moving on, and again, sort of that was a nice segue into sort of the next concern. Resources are limited. Lowell is looking at a very marginal increase next year based upon the new funding formula, and we have a lot of newcomers, ELL. What is your experience with trying to manage sort of an unpredictable number coming into the system without the resources to do that?
Let me change that and give you a concrete example. The demand for program seats of the division that I manage is over 3,000 seats. The current seat capacity that we have, I started with 900. We're at 1,500. In the last four years, I've dealt with multimillion-dollar budget deficits across my departments. The way that we've done that is reallocated. We've looked at efficiencies. We've looked at ways to better try to better service students and looked at ways that we can actually create programs that are more seamless and less cost-effective, and more cost-effective. So the ways that we look at it is we look at, what are we serving in the classroom? What are the ways that we're working in terms of delivering of that service? What are ways that we can be more effective with our classroom teachers? With the ELL students, we'd have to look at, what are the models that we're currently using? How are those models being effective? What are other interventions that are practical for that population? I.e., the same dynamic that we're facing here, Provo-Utah was facing two years ago. They went into looking at a service delivery model for Ls that included Imagine Learning, and that partnership has been fruitful for them. The same dynamic that we're facing in Lowell was faced by Providence. Providence did the same type of intervention. So it's not like thinking about ourselves as a unique situation, but looking at other best practices that we can tell that are existing across other districts and looking at the same populations and how to service them.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes, what is your approach to addressing underperforming schools? How, what's your experience in looking at those schools, evaluating, and bringing those schools up to a higher-performing and better scores, better performing school, if you will? What is your experience, and at the same time, ensuring that the other schools that have made great strides don't suffer or see a drop?
All right, there, I'll talk about the experience. I'll also reference the first statement I made, this academic achievement plan that we need to have as a district. At the core of what we do, it has to be, where are we with our academic achievement, our teaching and learning, and how do we ensure that our teaching and learning is rigorous? My experience has been in New Bedford. I oversaw three underperforming schools. In Boston, I've been working with English High School, which is the oldest high school in the country that went to a Level V, not a Level IV. And working with that school, we have been really effective in transforming the dynamics of that high school and really moving it away. I will speak specifically to what are some of the nature of the underperforming. There are three characteristics that we look at in underperforming. We look at, number one, what's happening in terms of the instruction in the classroom? Two, what's the type of data that we're getting about the students? Given that what we know about our students coming in, what are the types of gaps that they're coming in? In Boston, we actually did an analysis, and we were able to look at the high school office and determine that 35% of all the incoming ninth graders to our high schools were underperforming. They were coming in, they would help set the tone for that school to go underperforming. So that would be part of the initiative that we would look here, looking at data.
Thank you. Only got one minute left. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. I'm going to ask this of all the candidates. We have a city manager, we have an auditor that have been hired with city clerk. They're hired without contracts. I'm not a big person for contracts. We do have ordinances that covers all benefits anyway, and then, of course, the salary is negotiated. Would you work without a contract? Would you come to Lowell and work without a contract?
I think one of the things that we would enter into is some type of understanding or agreements. We'd have to have a commonality of expectations. Currently, I work at the whim of the superintendent, so I've worked under the same conditions. The difference is there is a common understanding about expectations, about goals, about how we see, what are the expectations we mutually have so that it is not injurious to the system and it's not injurious to my person. So you have to have that because on the flip side of that, what the other concern that I would have if I was on the school committee is how do you ensure continuity? The reason a contract only helps with superintendents or high-level positions is because it guarantees, and as most of you may know, the flux in these positions happens. People are recruiting all the time.
So you work without a contract right now?
Currently, I don't. I work under the conditions of the superintendent and based upon common agreements, expectations, and goals.
In the 10 minutes that I've had, you've provided a lot of information, direction in addition to your resume. I thank you for your time, and my time's expired.
Thank you.
Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, Mr. Fuentes.
Good evening.
Good to see you again. We were fortunate enough to have shared lunch with you yesterday at the school administration. It was great to catch up with you there. Thanks for being here this evening. I'm going to dive right into some questions here. So the Executive Director of Educational Options, is that a position that reports directly to the superintendent?
It's a position that reports to the chief academic officer.
Chief academic officer, who then reports to the superintendent?
To the superintendent.
Do you have direct reports in that role?
Yes. I have to be able to provide on a regular basis frameworks for accomplishments and goals. I just submitted what, who, how many students we've served this year, the types of projects that we're trying to do for next year, the budget planning, budget analysis, direct leverage points that we're doing, external grants that we've sought.
But you have employees working directly?
Oh, yeah. We have a number of directors.
How many direct reports report directly?
We have right now, in our office, we have a total of 12 direct reports.
Okay, great. So yesterday, we talked a little bit about the PARC standards, and you told me that in the city of Boston, they have been implemented. And we talked a little bit about how in Lowell we had not implemented them yet. We did a test period, but we did not implement them. So my question to you is, how important do you think it is that they be implemented, and is that something you would do right away as superintendent in Lowell?
I mean, the key question was another question I also asked staff, and I couldn't get a firm answer. One of the issues that PARC creates is that most of the PARC assessments are online, even though some are in writing. And I don't know what's the capacity of the school system to do online learning right now in terms of its capacity and technology. What do we have available in our classrooms? Do I believe it's important? I do believe it's vital.
We have a one-to-six ratio, by the way. We talked about this. I didn't have the answer, but I'll tell it for you.
Thank you. So that we would probably be able to do, implement PARC? I mean, the other piece that's important is really understanding that to implement the PARC, we have to also shift our teaching and learning to really think about metacognitive skill development. The types of questions that are being asked in that assessment are all about how students think about learning. It's about the skill of thinking. It's not just necessarily content. The MCAS has drifted us into content directive. PARC changes this game. So for us, it would be vital because we'd have to do a lot of professional development. And I know, because we have spent this year in Boston doing that from academics. Dr. Del Rey, who's my boss, has actually done a lot of this work. And part of the piece has been getting out there and sharing, here are some of the things that we need to change and working with principals and with teachers around how do you shift the content? So is it vital for us to do? Yes. Why? Because at some juncture, the Board of Education is going to approve PARC as an assessment. Districts like Boston, who didn't have to, implemented it. The only MCAS we're taking is Grade 10. All the rest, we're implementing PARC. It allows us to deal with the adjustments and gives us some free time to deal with that adjustment. I think that would be important for Lowell if we're thinking about this. But we have to also sit down with our leadership. We have to sit down with our principals. We have to sit down with our teachers because the implication of implementing this has a multiple stakeholder impact.
Okay, thank you. Another thing I noticed on your resume is in your current role, you talk about cutting-edge, school-based initiatives specifically to reduce dropout rates and increase graduation rates. Can you talk a little bit about those programs and what you did and how you might implement that in Lowell?
Sure. There's a number of things. Actually, your Director of Alternative Education was actually at the Rennie Center Forum Monday where we were presenting. We've done other things. One has been the creation of the Re-Engagement Center. Our Re-Engagement Center is probably the oldest in the country and the one that has done most incredible work. That is, like I mentioned before, a collective impact relationship. We don't do that at Lowell. Our partnership with the Private Industry Council has leveraged a number of resources to do that work, and that has done work on the recovery and outreach to students who have already dropped out. The second thing that we've done is intervention work with the high schools, as I mentioned before, looking at work like we did at English, where we took a cohort of students that we knew that were incoming that were going to be a risk factor. They had all the characteristics to fail, and we did interventions with those students. We implemented something that the district has been using that is a lead and lag indicator across the middle and high school that allows us to identify these students. And then in doing that, we actually implemented interventions that included case management support, which you just got a major grant for. We implemented interventions with academic supports, including longer school day for those students, more advanced tutoring, particular diagnostic assessment using the measures of academic progress to ascertain where the academics' gaps were and remediate on those gaps while still at the same time creating the academic intervention. Within 14 months, all of those students made it through.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I asked this of the prior candidate, and you know, I'm looking to have a superintendent that is going to create some stability here in Lowell and potentially be here for a long period of time. And looking quickly down your resume, since 2001, you haven't had a position that you stayed in for more than about three years. Two years as the Department of New Services, three years as the headmaster of the Charter School, a year in the Community Partnerships Healthcare Academy, three years in New Bedford, two years as the consultant for Reimagine in Providence, and now about three years in Boston. So give me some confidence that if you would be the...
I would retire from Lowell. I'm at the age that I can do seven years easily here without trying. I'm not looking to go to another superintendency. It's going to, any transformation that needs to happen in Lowell would have to take at least five years. It's not going to go anywhere without five years. Carla Bear was here for eight. The prior to Carla Bear superintendent here was here for at least 12. I'd like to at least try to be here at least seven years.
Okay, great. Thank you. Community groups. How important do you think it is for a superintendent to be in touch with groups in the community, such as business organizations and parent organizations and cultural organizations? Is that important and why?
Yeah, it's vital. As I shared with you this, what we have done with collective impact has been with all these different groups, gotten together to actually look at initiatives, working with community groups to actually look at, try to bring in resources we can't do, the mental health services, the type of support services that we can't provide directly to our students are done through our relationships with community groups. The work that we do with the private sector and with businesses allows us to leverage money, and not only money, but opportunities to do internships, to do job placement, to do career placement, all of those pieces that are vital. The next piece that we look at is also institutional partnerships with the universities, with hospitals, with all the different sectors that exist in this area, and really having them make an investment in the school system as an entity of transformation. That's some of the learning that I've learned both in Boston and in New Bedford that have been significant, that all these external stakeholders are part of our community and for me in the superintendency are a vital part of making a difference in the way that we want to impact not just the achievement, but how we want to look at 21st century skills and what do we want to look in terms of our future as a city.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is regarding collective bargaining. Have you ever had an opportunity to be part of a collective bargaining session? And if so, you know, how'd that go?
Two opportunities, and I'll talk about distinct ones. In New Bedford, the superintendent had the academic team actually meet to actually set the parameters of what we thought were the negotiation pieces and to think about what were the things that we had to do. That was one of the experiences we have with collective bargaining. The second one in my work in school-based health centers, I actually had to negotiate collective bargaining with nurses, with school nurses, with our existing nurses, and with other providers that we had. So we had to come to terms to think about how we would align that, given that we were dealing with a differentiated program structure than the rest of the public health structure. Those have been my two big experiences with collective bargaining in the last few years.
Can you give me the New Bedford thing again? I was distracted by all the fingers going up. So in New Bedford, exactly what did you do?
The superintendent had the academic superintendents all together as part of the team that actually developed the framework for our negotiation. So we actually worked together to develop the framework of what was negotiable, what were the things that we were willing to give up, everything else, as they went in into the negotiation table.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Fuentes, welcome and good to see you again. Just want to switch, change tactics a little bit and talk about management and leadership and, you know, kind of putting the nuts and bolts of actually implementing a lot of the creative ideas that a lot of learned individuals like yourself that do every day. What is your philosophy of management and leadership?
They're pretty much, I'm a big believer in Senji DePree, a lot of the work of Drucker. I was trained by some of these folks. So I believe that we're, that the two things are not necessarily separate. They're integrated. Leadership is about the ability to actually foster and create relationships that are productive and are significant and make a difference. What we use to manage is to really, to establish with folks what are the key goals and the objectives they want to be able to achieve? What does their work plan look like and how do they actually are going to implement their work? My work, my way of working is I look at basically a model of evaluation like Stufflebeam. I look at the outputs, I look at the outcomes, I look at the process, and I look at the products. Those are the four things that I look at when I'm looking at evaluation and I'm looking at my staff. So when we work, I don't say I work, we work. All the work that we've done in Boston and that we've got a statewide recommendation is not just me. It's been a cadre of us working together. It's the ability to listen to people because I don't have all the solutions. And even as superintendent, I'm not going to have all the solutions. It's the ability to reflect with them. It's the ability to show and be able to be insightful in some areas and in some areas to be reflective. So when I look at the management piece of this, it's about looking at what's the expectations that we have for this year? What are the attainable pieces that we want to have? What's our type of timeline? What are the types of resources that we're going to allocate? And significantly, how is that going to impact on our major role, our major goal to impact the teaching and learning of our students?
Okay. In your current role, can you give me an example of how you do that? Like, not using names obviously, but give me an example of what you've done to work with an individual as you evaluated them and moved them or, or in a case, how to really provide different professional development to a system?
All right, so I'll give you a few of them. I have staff people who are brand new to a job, have never done the job, have great experience, but have never really been managing multiple sites. So this is, first thing has to multitask. They're not managing a school or a program, they're doing three of those. So it's setting up what the goals are, setting up, asking them what they see as a schedule. Where do they see their priorities in terms of each of the sites? And why are they using those as priorities? What are the types of interventions that they're going to be doing with their staff? What's the type of communication? And then even in those instances with one staff member, I've had to make an intervention to create a communication strategy and bring in an outside facilitator to help the communication between her and her staff because they weren't, they weren't communicating. They weren't communicating effectively. They weren't listening to each other. And she was so caught up with the operational pieces and the accomplishments and the concrete that she was missing out on the process. So that was part of some of the work that I did with that staff member. And in her goals, we actually looked at what were some of the areas that she had to grow in and expose her to some, some programs and some seminars and some opportunities that she could actually acquire those skills to understand that it's not just about the outcome and it's not just about the operational tangible thing you had to accomplish. It's about how you're doing that and how people feel that they have ownership into that. I also modeled that for them because not only do I do that with her, but actually right now in a redesigned structure that we're doing, I'm actually going out to all the programs and sharing with them and giving them the framework and asking for inputs and saying, "All your questions are all legitimate. All the concerns you have are all legitimate. All the issues you're going to raise are all legitimate." And I give them value. So part of the structure is being able to listen, is to give people value, is to give them an opportunity to provide feedback, and also to look at what are the best recommendations that they have for certain areas that you're working on. And I consider all that when I'm working with staff.
Just, can you give an example of what you do when you simply, you've done those strategies and for whatever reason the outcomes have not been satisfactory or successful?
I tend to try to think about this in a baseball strategy. My father, which is I try the first strike. Okay, we tried this strategy, it didn't work, it wasn't working, it didn't work at all. I try the second piece. Okay, let's do a concrete structure, let's try to look at what it is. I'm not seeing the type of performance, what do you think the issues are? And I will try to think through with them on the second piece of what's going wrong. By the third time, I'm saying, okay, here's the structure of what's not working. Here's what needs to happen. Here are the resources I'm putting in place at this second one for interventions to help you get here. Here's the type of outcomes that I need and here's the timeline that I need. If at the end of this timeline, this isn't working, it may be that this is not the right fit for you.
So you put a structured timeline to it, excellent. Hiring principals and evaluating them is going to be one of the biggest jobs that a superintendent does. With the number of schools that we have, any superintendent coming into the district, really, you're going to rely upon their effectiveness. How, what do you look for in an individual that's going to run, say, an elementary school or a middle school in terms of leading that particular, really small solar system of the school system, if you will?
There's a couple of things that I tend to do when I'm looking at hiring. Whether it's a principal, whether it's an assistant superintendent, whether it's a assistant principal. Part of the issue is that this has to be a collaborative process. When I mean that I say I'm collaborative, I agree and I believe in what we've done in Boston for many years. Taking up and putting together a screening committee. We create a profile. We look at what are the essential skills that we need. The screening committee should have all stakeholders. If I'm going for a high school principal, I want to make sure there's high school students in that hiring process. I want parents. I want inputs from a school committee member. We did this in New Bedford with the middle school. We had one of those school committee members as part of that. But in that screening process, there's a screening, there's a job description, a screening process that we put together, a cadre of interview questions that we've agreed to, a rating sheet that we've established. And that committee goes through the first tier of them. The second tier, once they've got their two final candidates, they would come to me, like I've done with my own staff, come to me. And what I'm looking for is I'm looking for their capacity to lead, their capacity to actually look at a school and inspire teachers to, to be part of that community. Their capacity to understand teaching and learning. Their commitment to excellence for students, all students. And then what I'm looking for is their capacity to be able to share and create ownership and create a professional learning community. Those are the five elements that at a principal level are essential. If you don't have those elements, then you're running into serious issues. Because you need to be able to gather the strength and the support of the teachers to be able to transform a school. If you don't have that, then you have an undermining going on between your vision and the teachers buying into that vision.
Just to kind of follow up a little bit about central office. With a big organization, you have a large central office. How do you ensure that central offices is assisting and helping the schools in the field be successful as opposed to, you know, we're a political animal of our own and we're the ones leading the charge? How do you like interact to make sure they're working effectively?
There's a couple of things that are necessary in every school system. And I learned this both in New Bedford and in Boston. Transparency is one. What is the role that we have for people in central office? How do we actually approach what we do? One of the great things I've learned from Boston is the way that we look at budget and the transparency we have. The budget process is a community process, it's a school process, it's an open process that is transparent to everyone. So we're not hiding, we're not making decisions behind closed doors. We're having decisions together. We're presenting what our recommendations are, but these are coming from the ground up. We meet with principals about their budgets, we look about what their needs are, we then take the next step. What are the issues of central office? How do we calibrate those? What are the particular needs? And that is not just a stakeholder of the particular assistant superintendent or superintendent there. It's really about the other stakeholders. What's the role that HR has in this? What's the role that operations has in this? Where are the different components that have, that intersect in the way that we're servicing schools? So that's a key issue for me, making sure that there is that transparency. And two, making sure what's the technical assistance that we're providing to schools? So if we have all these principals, we have 20, 20-something principals and we're, what's the role that the central office folks are doing to support them in their work? And that's the important piece.
Mr. Fuentes, thank you very much. I appreciate your time today.
Good evening, Mr. Fuentes. First off, I want to thank you very much for being such a wonderful host when we came down to do the site visit at your, at your, a number of different school locations, which was great. You really pulled together, I think, a really diverse and interesting group of students and, and, and community partners and staff to talk with us about your experience. So I really appreciated that. One of the key things that, that I always ask as we're going through these superintendent interviews, could you describe for me kind of your, your overarching educational theory that, that drives your work? Whether it's being able to, I know you've been, during your interview here tonight, have been able to cite some specific research that, that has informed the way you conduct your, your professional life, whether it's a specific kind of pedagogy that, that you feel has been the most effective. What is it that really drives you as an educator and what do you use to back that up? What's brought you to that, to that conclusion?
I'm a strong believer that education is the most pivotal part of learning and that it's a lifelong process. From a theory of action perspective, it is a transformative learning process. And it comes out of a lot of the work that I studied because I actually did study with Paulo Freire. So being able to understand that every person has the capacity for learn and that they actually are educated, they have knowledge in them, and expanding and bringing that into the reality of what we face. Second thing, when I look at pedagogy, one of the biggest pedagogies that drives my understanding is student directed learning. SDL is probably the cutting edge of all of our learning. It's when students can actually decide how to learn, what to learn, and apply that knowledge in everything they do. Prior to that, the work that we're doing now is, that we've been doing and that we're pushing is project-based learning where students are at the center of actually doing some type of action research, which we do teachers, that drive this effort. Between those elements and everything that I believe in is that achievement students can achieve, that success is something that can happen, it's real, that you want to strive for perfection, but you can live with excellence.
This sounds like it should be stitched on a pillow somewhere. Coming in as a, as a leader of a, of a district like the, like we have here in the city of Lowell, you know, a key thing is really setting the tone, is setting the tone for an entire district of over 14,000 students, well over 1,100 staff. And really, the, the entire school community will be impacted by your approach, your philosophy. What is the kind of school culture, district culture, that you'd want to be responsible for, for bringing here to the city of Lowell and kind of crafting as part of your superintendency?
I think one of the first things I really want to think about is a culture of active engagement. So that as superintendent, I want to be made visible to principals. I had the experience of talking with them now and visiting the schools and talking with teachers. I don't want that to go away. I want, be able to have that piece of happening. I want to do that also, that engagement with the community and even with the school committee, where we can actually talk about what are some of the goals that we're trying to achieve? What are some of the obstacles we face? What are some of the challenges that we're seeing? What are some of the thoughts that people have? Some of you have been here a long time. You've been through a number of folks. You've actually seen the positive pieces and you know where some of the issues lie. I'm not, I'm coming new to this. I want to be able to listen and I want to be able to learn. As much as I have something to offer, and I think I do, I also am somebody that I want to be reflective and respectful of some of the efforts that have been there. So that level of engagement is really important. I think that's the second part of that is to create some inspiration and to highlight some incredible things that are happening. Okay, you have incredible teaching happening in Lowell. I mean, I was really, really impressed by the academic director and the high school team. They know they're in a level three school, but they were able to reflect and with me have a candid discussion about what the issues they were facing. The director of curriculum there is a wonderful, intelligent woman who is able to reflect on what are the challenges she's facing. That's the type of reflective action and dialogue of engagement that as a superintendent I'd want to have. So now let's start thinking, what is our strategy? What are the things that we need to do? When I visited the Sullivan, there was a lot of concern about, here's some of the concerns that, look, look at this wall of what the students are going through. So we noticed that there's a lot of trauma. How do we create a sense of, of support to our teachers to deal with trauma? How do we prepare our teachers? Like the mayor was saying about all this cultural change that's happening with the number of ELL and the amount of growth? Well, how do we prepare people for cultural change? What are the types of understandings of, we have of these different populations? How do we work to really embrace this and create capacity in the district? And I think that level of engagement, when I use that tone of engagement encompasses all those other areas.
When you, and we've talked a little bit about the dozen or so direct reports that, that you have in your current position. With the implementation of the new evaluation protocol that came down this year, look at you nodding, which was obviously a pretty dramatic change. Could you tell us a little bit about how you implemented that? How you feel it, it served a positive purpose? And were able to kind of make it an effective management tool for yourself in your, in your management group?
In our case, we've been doing it for three years. So for us, it's not new. It was something that we implemented as a level four district. I was part of the EPIMS, the EPIMS was the Educational Personnel Advisory Council that actually developed the tool together with the state. So part of it is that what we look for in the tool is to actually create a feedback loop that would allow people to look at the areas of strength and where the areas of growth are. With my, my staff, I'm just laughing because the question that they were asking about how to deal with the staff member, in that evaluation tool, we actually put the goals that we, we set forth. And we looked at the artifacts that would demonstrate that there were these changes and the professional development that went on and the type of changes in demeanor and the type of conversations that happened. And I looked at feedback from a, a survey that we did with staff that gave us feedback about that manager's particular work. So I think it's been very effective. It's time-consuming. And that's one of the things that for a lot of our principals, it's really hard. When you're dealing with this and you've got a lot of time that you're putting into this evaluation system, it really requires you to spend three, four days working at the, looking at structural practices. And not just looking at it for the sense of seeing, trying to dipstick to look at the climate and trying to understand how things are calibrating in the school. You're going in to observe and you're going in to evaluate. And that means you have to do write-ups, you have to be prepared to look at, you have to look at evidence. Those are the types of things that I think are taxing on folks. And we need to find the strategies to support them and also to get them to be a little bit more efficient and effective with that. The way that I think that this could be a great tool is it allows us to really give a lot of constructive feedback to actually help set up for teachers and for administrators on a plan of improvement. And then at the end, if that plan is not met, then what we've come to is we've done, we've exercised as, from our sense as a district, all due diligence with that staff member.
Could you give us an example, whether from your, your current position or, or previous positions, when you found yourself presented with a, a professional crisis, with a, a situation that needed an immediate response, that needed a collective response? How did you kind of craft your strategy to kind of solve a problem and effectively enlist staff in helping you to, to help solve that problem?
We, one big problem that we confronted this year with the new code of conduct in 222, actually it was the year before, was to actually think about how we were going to implement the changes of 222 in a district of the size of Boston. Amongst us seeing things that we started to think about was how do we do that across all the schools and all the strategies at the same time? So a year before the law came into being, we actually began the implementation process. Part of the strategy that I work with a team of folks is, and you met one of them, Sam DePina, we actually started to design what would the training be like? What was the type of work that would be done? Who would be able to complete what training? What were the changes that we had to do in the protocol? And really delineate that a year before we had to do it so that it would not be, it wouldn't create so much burden on principals? And still with all of that, it's still been a learning process for our district. I can imagine that for all other districts implementing that at this year, it must have been daunting. Because you're changing the way that you do business with discipline and changing it from a different behavioral mode. So that's an example of how we did some planning and we did some strategy development and we did a two-year plan and we monitored the implementation at different intervals and put out all different types of training and different types of support structures and Q and A's and technical assistance.
Well, with one minute and 30 seconds left, I'll ask you the telling question. Could you tell us and describe for us in that very limited period of time, your communication style in terms of communicating expectations, disappointments, challenges with your school community and with the greater community beyond?
I'm pretty much, I try to be like an Apple Macintosh, what you see is what you get. I'm, I'm very, I, I speak my mind, I open up and I will share with people. I will let them know, here's my expectations. I will work with people to craft. I'm a fairly good writer, so I actually can write things and I'll publish them and put them out there. I tend to be a visual learner, so I do a lot of stuff with PowerPoint presentations, visuals, cams, graphic organizers. I try to think about the learner, so not just the student, but the adult, and think about that. I also try to try to create an organized system by what, which people can work with. So if I'm working with a school committee and they're asking me, well, can you give us your plan? I'm going to say, okay, how do you want this? So I'll be, I'll be asking people, how do they want things? What do they want? In what modality works for them? Because not everyone is like me. So I tend, that's my style of communicating. I tend to be very upfront, I'm very, I am very expressive. I will say things as they are, I will put them in writing and I will follow through on them.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, for joining us this evening and thank you for putting your name forward. I just have a few questions as it gets down the line. A number of our questions are taken up by previous colleagues. So my first question is, aside from curriculum, can you tell us a bit about other areas of business operations that you're directly involved?
I deal with a lot of, right now I just finished putting out the request for proposals that we're putting out for the district for services for about 660,000. Last year I actually wrote the RFR for 1.5 billion. So I do a lot of the operational pieces for 30B for bidding. And I make sure that we comply with what it is and I send it to the business office. We do a lot of account management because we have a number of contracts and vendors. So we do a lot of business management of our accounts and payables. So on the financial side of it, I keep tabbed all the money expenditures. The other part of, of design work that I've done, I just finished last year doing a redesign of one of our program's facilities. So we had to redo the space and look at that. I've done that both here, I've done it in Boston in my other role when I was at Boston Evening Academy in terms of redesign facilities for space for school. And when I was in New Bedford, the superintendent actually assigned me to work in terms of the redesign facilities issues that we were facing with one of our middle schools that was on toxic soil. So a little bit about that piece of it.
A little bit of everything. Okay, can you outline for us strategies that you had employed or implemented to increase parent engagement? And what metrics did you use to measure your success?
Yes. Parent engagement, we look at a number of things. First is we look at what's the type of outreach and community engagement that we have with parents? Strategies that we look at is we look at communications, what's our type of, what methodology of communication? Time, what do we do in terms of, of moments that we're talking with parents and being sensitive to that? We also look at ways in which we create centers that are actually responsive to the needs, cultural needs of parents. We actually work in, and the code of conduct was a key issue. We actually went out to all the different parent organizations in their native languages and created the train, same training we were giving our principals. We actually employed that as part of our premise to do that with all the parent groups. We created our code of conduct advisory, which actually had a number of parent organizations and advocates and lawyers to actually look at our practice and help us reflect on the practice and help us change that. So part of our strategy was one of engagement, one of change, one of mutual feedback and negotiation about how we did that. In terms of the work that we've, that I've done, I've done actually other work in other districts, like in Providence, I've done a lot of work with Latino and Portuguese parents, particularly in the area of summoning learning loss and doing training with them directly. I've worked with some of my colleagues in Boston on the parent university side to actually look at the implementation of distinct conduct pieces. With adult education, which is one of the programs that we oversee, we actually have done training, adult education, adult literacy for 700 parents this year. And part of our work is to create a capability in those parents that will allow them to work with their students and be more effective in schools.
All right. What budget infrastructure do you prefer to utilize?
Excuse me?
A budget infrastructure?
Okay, the way that we have been doing budget and budget infrastructures in Boston is we actually- is we actually are somewhat different than most of the people across the Commonwealth. We're using a weighted student funding. We allocate dollars to each of the different needs of students and based upon their needs, we allocate that to the schools. The dollars follows the student. So if you have 500 students and they have particular weights and they add up to $6,000, your allocation of dollars goes directly to your school or to your site or to your program based upon the weight and the need of that student. And that is followed wherever the student goes. So that's one of the ways that we look at this. The other piece that we are trying and have worked with has been unprioritized budgets, where we look at, here are the key priorities of the district and these are the things that we're going to fund. We apply the weighted student funding to the priorities and that's, there's an alignment between those two. The majority of the work with weighted student funding requires and gives a level of equity across all schools and all programs. And it allows for transparency on the different needs of students. So if you have an ELL student who's a Level Four student, that's very different than a regular ed student because the requirements of academic need and intervention for that student are going to be much more than you're going to have for a student who's in a regular ed classroom. And that we've seen across the state. And it's been, and most of our work has been done in terms of alignment, both state and national frameworks around these students.
Okay. Now, in our conversation yesterday, you had mentioned leveling. Do you level students in the district? So, you know, so again prioritizing funding for, you know, the Level Four, Level Three, Level Two, Level One?
When we look at the ELD levels, yeah. Because what you're looking at is an ELD Level One student requires less resources. You're talking about 2.5 hours a day compared to a student who's a Level Three or a SIF student, a student with interrupted formal education that may require three to four hours of the same type of intervention on a daily basis. So based on that need is where you're putting the type of resources to it. Because you're going to require that school to be able to support that student and that's going to require more staffing.
Okay. So also, in addition, in addition to that question pursuant to our conversation yesterday, you had mentioned that students, when you had done your tour at Lowell High School, you had mentioned that you had met with our curriculum director over there and extolled all her virtues. And, but you had mentioned that in the course of your discussion, I mean, I know, we know that you've been doing your homework on our district and we know that you've delved very deeply into our data. And one of the observations that you had made was that these, our students at the high school are not seeing the achievement that they should be. And what do you, what would you suggest as a remedy to that?
If we, if we separated the cohorts, and this is why I was so impressed with the curriculum director, okay? She got it the instant I made the statement, she just smiled and said, yeah, this is true. The gains of the kids who are not ELL and are not students with disabilities, the growth and the rigor of that is not where it should be. What we're talking about is the way that we would change that. And she actually has some really great focus on this. Is that we have, many high schools focus on content development and yet park and the new direction of learning is more about high-level metacognitive skill development. So what we would need to do is start to really think about, what are the types of skill sets? Rather than talk about the homework assignment, give the solution of the math homework and say to the students, how did I get here? And show me another way of doing it. It's pushing the skill sets in a different way. If you were to look at, and if you Googled webs web, you'll see that there are four levels of that learning. Where she was referencing was that she's seeing a lot of great stuff happening at Levels One and Two. But the levels that we need to create rigor are Levels Three and Four because those are the levels where the metacognitive analysis, where the comparative pieces, where the synergy of thinking is occurring. And that would be some of the things that we would look at. Strategies to help teachers, look at move just from content, to look at really at the high-level skill and high-level thinking that needs to occur.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, and thank you for hosting us on our site visit to Boston. My first question I have is a large percentage of children in Lowell go to private schools. Do you think it is important for public schools to try to serve all of the children of a city? It's actually multi-part. Why or why not? And what would you do to determine why people are not choosing public schools in Lowell?
Well, I think it's important that the public schools, that we reinvest. And I'm a public school believer. My son went to public schools. I'm an investor in it. I think we have to create a belief in the community that our schools are schools of excellence. I think we have to put a reputation out there. All that, most of the time in public schools, we talk about all the things that are not happening, but of all the things that are happening. You have a numbers of students at Lowell High School that are basically going to a quasi-Latin school, which is what we have in Boston. This is a high-performing piece. These students are high-performing students. How do we hype that up? What's the difference that we can do? What, what makes our schools a 21st century school? What makes Lowell High School a 21st century school? What makes our elementary schools a place where you want to send our kids? What are some of the things that we can do that can make a difference? One is messaging, what's our promotional strategy to parents? Number two is also ascertaining what they think? What's the perception that they have about our schools? Why don't they send the kids to? Why would they decide to go to a parochial school and not go to our schools? So that would be one of the things I'm interested in knowing. What is it that they think? And what do they perceive? And do they perceive all our schools the same? Second is then creating this promotional piece and getting out there and creating a message. Third is starting to inundate with innovation and possibilities and get it into the media so that people start seeing the positive thesis happen. All right, so there are a number of things that are really great about the school system. You have great interventions with ELL students. I saw that yesterday, I was in classrooms. I'm, I'm an ELL teacher, I began my career as a bilingual teacher in elementary school. I was there seeing what was happening with those kids. It was phenomenal what some of the principals were doing. The Sullivan, the caring nature of that wall that said, if you knew this about me, about really understanding the characteristics of students. The capability of the high school students and reflecting about, what would I bring to this and what type of innovation would I bring that would make a difference for them? Those are questions and positive pieces that the students have. And how do we highlight that? How do we put it out there? How do we share? And that's one of the things that I have learned in the last 10 years that Boston's been doing. And that's been a big difference with the number of schools. Not everyone's in love with all Boston schools, but there's a number of Boston schools that people are in love with.
Thank you. My next question is, what have you done in your current or former role to support teachers in the classroom? And what would you do in your role as superintendent to support them?
I think there are three things that are really important. Number one is that you have to listen to teachers, find out what, and I do that constantly now. I talk to my teachers, I listen to them, I meet with them today. I've spent the day, most of my day today, meeting with teachers and sharing a little bit about the vision of what's going to be going on, opening up transparency in terms of some of the decisions that are happening at central office and looking at what the new directions are going to be and giving them some assurances about where we want to go and also allowing them the opportunity to participate in what we're going to do. I wouldn't do anything different here in Lowell. Have that type of conversation, that type of open dialogue. The second, the second thing that I think is really important for us to be able to do with teachers is to also think about how we target our professional development and align it to the type of needs and the expectations that we have. Most school districts, we do a menu of a lot of different professional development, but it's not targeted and aligned to the types of results that we want to be able to achieve. So how do we align that? And how do we have that dialogue with teachers to make sure that they're getting what they need? We're asking expectations, we've talked about the park. But if we're going to do park, that means we have to really think about how we're going to hype up our PD for teachers to give them the capacity to cope with what the park brings to them. And I think the third thing is also is valuing and highlighting teachers. And you can do this in terms of a simple recognition each week or looking at visiting their classrooms or giving them a high-five about something great they've done. I mean, there's ways that we have to value, because teachers at the core are the people at the real frontline. They're more than principals, it's the teachers. It's them that we have to work with them to really think that they are the most valuable asset that we have. Because that's the truth.
Thank you. You answered my third question on professional development, so we'll go to the next one. Please tell us about your most difficult administrative predicament that you found yourself in and how you handled it.
Oh, that was last year when we were dealing with a major budget cut. We were cutting away from one of our programs, Adult Education, about $1.1 million off their, to almost $3 million of their budget. It became a real difficult piece. Because on one side, we had to deal with the budget cut that was being insisted upon from the superintendent's office. On the other side, I had 500 parents and students, adult students advocating and going to city council and trying to reconcile that. And then dealing with my adult education director and saying to her, let's see how we're going to be, make this a meaningful conversation and how we're going to try to reconcile these two things. The expectation that we have to cut money and the reality that we've got political lobbying that will probably overturn some of these cuts. So we've got to find a meaningful medium. And that took a lot of challenges for us, it took a couple of months to figure out. I, I took a lot of heat for that dynamic internally in the system. On the flip side, what we ended up is we ended up raising about $400,000 in grants that offset some of those cuts. And later on, some restoration came in. But at the end of the day, we lost about $800,000 of revenue for adult ed, but we made it up through grants and other resources. And then we streamlined some of the programming. So that was a very hard time and it was a very difficult challenge because it was between, I was put between a rock and a hard place on two issues. I really believe in the work that my staff does in adult ed. They're cutting edge. I really believe that the program really makes a difference with parents. But I understood with the system was, that was not going to be a major priority. They didn't want to put all the money they were putting into it. So it was that type of quandary that was very difficult to manage. Because I had to be able to support my staff while at the same time comply with my boss.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Good evening, Mr. Fuentes, welcome. And I'm glad you enjoyed your visit at the high school. And I think especially the interaction with the students, I think was, was very helpful. I have a few questions, a follow-up question to one of my colleagues. And I just, just for a minute or two to, for clarification. We were talking about the hiring process in regards to principals. If you could go just one step further, when you were talking about the stakeholders being at the table here, could you be a little bit more specific? And let, let's for argument's sake, say that there's assistant principal for two different schools. Would you have the process the same for both schools? Would there be consistency with them?
When you look at a hiring process, if we create a hiring system that we want to ensure equity, and that's the background that I come with, to ensure equity, to make sure that these processes are fair and just, we look at the stakeholder group and we look at the process across the board, is a similar process. So if we're in a district and we're hiring principals and we got three principals that we're hiring for three different middle schools, our process should look pretty much the same. The stakeholder groups in those may change because you may have different parents, you may have different community members that are there, you may have different types of teachers or school site council folks that are part of that. You may have a school committee member that may choose not to be part of that, so we have to think something else, or assistant superintendent may be part of that. How we configure that may be a little bit different, but the process should be identical.
Thank you. During the preparation of the annual budget, how would you include the various stakeholders from within the schools and the community? Or would you?
I think, first, I would. I think a budget process of the school department is something that is public. It's not private. It's something we have to develop. The priorities that we set forth are things that we're going to have and put forth here as recommendations. That's what they are. At the end of the day, it's the deliberation of our committee. And then after the school committee, it's the deliberation that we have for the support from the mayor's office and from the city council for the appropriations. So we have to think about this as a public process. One of the things that I've admired about the process that's used in Boston is that we go through six or eight weeks of public hearings for the budget. And the budget is totally transparent. Even the decisions are recommendations. Example, this year, there was a recommendation that some of us were part of to close a number of schools. At the end of the day, two schools were closed, not five. The rest of the money had to be found from central services and everyone had to reallocate funding and take a cut at central services to be able to deal with that distinction. And that was something we had to do. But it was because the process was public. It was open. And the committee was open to listening to the different demands. And at each juncture of questions that got generated, it was a responsibility of the school superintendent and of the budget team to actually come back and share and give responses to each of the concerns. I think that has to be open. I think the other piece about what you mentioned, how would you do this? Is I'm a big believer, like I said, about weighted student funding. I'm also a big believer in looking at how we actually allocate dollars to our schools and what's the autonomy that the school has to really think about that. There are costs that are embedded. There are central costs that we have to be able to think about this in terms of our resource centers. So part of it would be reconfiguring how we look at our budget by resource center, by each of the cost factors that are there, and then coming back and saying, okay, how do we do this transparently? Our budget should be something that each committee member and everyone else is seeing and is totally open and transparent. We should not have an issue with that.
I thank you. The, let's assume, and we've, we've seen it too often, that we've had to make some cuts. And in our budget, somewhere in the vicinity of $160, $160 million in that vicinity, if, if we had a cut, if we had a cut 1%, let's assume, where would that be cut? Where would you look at, where would you look at the cuts to come first? And where would be the last places you might want to cut?
All right, so let's think about for budget cuts, a couple of things. Number one, what are ways that we can do things that are more efficient? What are things that we don't need? What are things that we can negotiate to do differently that would save us money? Then, in addition to those pieces, what are essential pieces that are prioritized that we have achieved? So we have achievement, we now have an achievement statement that we've made. We have a clear direction about what our strategy is for learning, for teaching and learning, and what are the allocations on those priorities? And we have a, we have a weighted student or program-based budgeting at our schools. So based on that, we're going to say, here are our major priorities, that's what we're funding first. The way that any good school system does is that it actually starts by, the last hold harmless of cuts is schools. The last place you cut is schools. The first place you look at is efficiencies, you look at retirements, you look at changes in personnel. You look at then, if we have to make cuts, what can we do differently in the way that we operate? And then lastly, what is it that we can cut from our central services that will make a difference? But in doing that, we have to make clear to the schools what the implications that's going to be. And it has to be clear to the committee what the implications of that's going to be in terms of our functioning. So for everything we do or we decide not to do, there's an implication of what outcome it will achieve or not achieve.
I thank you. We've talked briefly and touched actually on a few different questions in regards to partnerships. And I think we all realize that they're extremely important. You know, in the city of Lowell, we have the college, the university, nonprofits, the business community and so forth. Could you give us an example of a partnership that you, you yourself have brought forward in your career? And when you take a look at Lowell, what might you want to bring forward with another partnership with your? Because you talked about being very creative. If we could have an example of what you did do before and what you would like to do here?
Let's talk about two distinct ones. One of the partnerships that we worked in New Bedford that was very powerful was our partnerships that we did with the Shannon Grant that secured the Bedford, the city of New Bedford, the Shannon Grant. That was one of the big things. The school department was pivotal in some of the work that we did, the school department and I did on behalf of the superintendent, was actually work in the crafting what the direction would be and what was the type of, of resources and all the collaborators in that. In Boston, there are two initiatives that we've worked with. One of them has been the Opportunity Youth Initiative and the Bison Initiative. Opportunity Youth is a national initiative that we've been looking at for students 16 to 24 that are not achieving, are not employed, have not received not only secondary education but post-secondary. And we actually have worked, we secured a national grant. And we actually got a planning grant, we got a planning grant and now secured a national grant that has brought into this whole creation of something we call a career center. Part of that partnership has created opportunities for our students that as they're exiting the K-12 network, as they're graduating in non-traditional schools, they're actually being put into a career center that gives them post-secondary pathways that does a stackable credential, they can get a VOK Tech, they can get a certificate, employable skills and also allows them to continue on to college. The other piece that we've done with Bison has been with our community-based agencies to provide additional services in our realm, including with College Bound Door Tester, EdCo, a number of other agencies. Edco, um, a number of other agencies that we have as partners that actually provide some of the alternative education and the code of conduct services for our students. This makes a significant difference. We've done a third partnership with North Star Learning Centers where they've actually implemented wraparound case management across multiple sites in Boston and in multiple schools that allow us to look at clinical services, wraparound, family interventions, and high-level support by using a national best practice, but also an agency that's culturally competent and linguistically competent to serve the needs of students. So those are just some of the basic examples, some of the partnerships. We have a couple of more, um, but I'm hoping that will suffice.
I, I, I thank you. Fast forward, I, I just found out that we have just two minutes left here. So fast forward, you're the superintendent of the Lowell Public Schools, and it's now a year from now. Uh, what would you want the, the staff, um, the parents, the community, uh, the city of Lowell to say about your first year?
I think that their first say is that it's been energetic. It's been filled with energy, it's been filled with accessibility, it's been filled with visibility. They see me, I'm part of that community. Teachers say, yeah, he's in the classroom, he's talking, he's working with us. It's also, it's been that we've started to do a planning process that get us into some of the things I've mentioned. We have an academic plan for interventions for our schools. We've started to see some of the changes. We've looked at different models of innovation. We're now looking at rigor. We're looking at the high-level success areas that we have in schools and we're starting to highlight those. People feel that this is moving in a real positive direction. People feel that there's more transparency, that teachers are seeing the decisions and administrators, that when things are happening at central office, they know about what's happening at the end of that week. They're receiving newsletters, they're informed, you know? People see me at the high school, they see me at the games, they'll see me present in the work, they see me in the community, they see me visiting parents and talking to people, and not just in English, I'll be talking in other languages, and sharing with them and connecting with them and making that type of relationship about the schools. The other thing is that I will try and I would make an impression to make these partnerships that we're talking about vital elements of, of what we're doing. So people say, you know, this guy is everywhere. There's an old Spanish saying that they would probably say, I'm like white rice. White rice is everywhere in Spanish dishes.
Mr. Fuentes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So, uh, Mr. Fuentes, um, we would like to, um, thank you for your enthusiasm, Mr. Leary. We would like to also now, uh, thank you. I think that you have been very thorough in your responses to all the questions. Uh, I know that I have learned a great deal more about you through my colleagues' questions. We would like to now offer you an opportunity for a closing statement if you would like.
Sure, I'll take the opportunity for the closing statement. I'll say to you what probably one of the important things. I chose to apply to your school system for a second time. I chose because I really believe in the innovation and the character of what your city has done. I really think this is a great place. I really do. I really believe that there is everything here to make this an incredible success and make it a pilot that would make people around the country see what a medium-sized urban area can be and that we can be a tier-one school system, not just a tier-one school. That we have innovation, that we have creativity, that we have committed people, and that the people here really care about all kids and make a difference. That we're capitalizing on our cultural competency and the cultural capital of our students and our community to create a global setting in a, in a place called Lowell that used to be a mill city that's now a center of transformation and innovation. And that our schools are following the very direction of the city. We are innovative, we are transformative, we are cutting-edge, and people are talking about what we're doing. They want to come here. That's why I want to be here. I want to be able to highlight and make this probably the glory and crown, the shining star of my crown, and the last big education thing I do would be this, the superintendency of Lowell, and make a difference for this community and make people feel that, that we have achieved something and that it's tangible and that people can point to. And that the state could recognize the incredible work of our students, of our families, and their incredible value. And the incredible commitment of people like yourselves who make a difference every day and put the additional time, that you could feel proud and feel upright, that we're a national entity that makes a difference. I believe I can do that. I have done that in every other thing that I have done, every other position. It's gotten, grabbed recognition and made a difference. Our practices have been highlighted. I believe I can bring that to the superintendency. And I have the energy, I have the commitment, I have the passion and more than, I have the desire to do it. And I hope you give me that opportunity.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Leary. So if it's okay with the committee, why don't we take a five-minute break? We'll let the other candidate get prepared and then we will reconvene and begin the second round of interviews.
Yes, yes, yes.
She's not smoking cigars when you're in trouble.
Look, she's been smoking like six years.
What if it again because she's not going to be here for a while. So five minutes. It's been, like what has been, seven, eight? If you're gonna start smoking cigarettes. Did Kristen smoke too? It's American. Okay.
You want to walk through there? Pretty messy.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz, we're waiting for you. You know, when we say five minutes, when you say five minutes to your children, you mean five. Okay, can, um, thank you. We'd like to, uh, we'd like to resume the interview process, so if we, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah.
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. Um, thank you. Uh, that was a, uh, first round was, uh, another successful interview. Uh, we'll proceed, Mr. Gilbert, could you please bring in the next candidate? And we will resume our interview process. Uh, this round, we will start Mr. Gendron and work our way down the line. Uh, again, ten minutes. Mr. Cassidy will keep, keep the time and keep us as close to ten minutes as we can. Appreciate it. Mr. Lang, welcome. We'll begin. Mr. Gilbert?
Dr. Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent of Business Finance for Lowell Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Welcome, Mr. Lang. See, you went with the pink tie tonight. It looks, uh, very good with, on your, uh, with the complexion. Oh, I'm sorry. We're gonna give you an opening statement. Sorry about that.
Mr. Lang, we are very eager with the question.
I still like the pink tie.
I realize we're starting late, but, you know, I got a few things to get in here before we-
Mr. Lang, as we have in the past, as you probably know, um, each candidate, um, the, the process each candidate, we'd like to offer an opening statement. And then we'll proceed with, um, a line of question and answering by each member of the committee. And we'll just follow alphabetically and then follow, conclude with a closing statement.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee and Mayor Elliott, uh, for having me here tonight. I, um, have been looking forward to this evening and having the opportunity to come and interview, uh, with you for this position, uh, for quite some time. I know folks know me, but, you know, for the viewing audience, I wanted to, uh, just cover a few things before we get started. Um, I am currently the Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations for the Lowell Public Schools. Uh, it's a position I've held for the last twelve years and it's a position I really enjoy, uh, holding and working in this community. Uh, prior to that, I had the, um, great fortune of working as the Coordinator of Extended Time Programs and Director of Community Schools, uh, in the Lowell Public Schools. Where I was able to really work, uh, closely with, uh, building level teachers and administrators to develop, uh, some really, um, fun and exciting, uh, programs for our, uh, youth to extend the learning day. So, uh, it was a way to complement the activity that actually occurred during the regular classroom and melded with the after-school, uh, initiatives in the district, and that was a lot of fun. Um, at the real onset of my career, I had the opportunity, um, to teach. And I think a lot of folks don't, um, realize that because my teaching experience was at Chelmsford High School and not Lowell High School. Uh, but that was a lot of work that I enjoyed. I, I taught for a couple of years out there before having the opportunity to come to Lowell. And, um, that really helped shape my, uh, beliefs and understanding of education and, uh, values, and the value of the role of, uh, teachers play in our community and teachers play with kids. Uh, that really has, has shaped a lot of my work from the, uh, from the outset of my, uh, career. And as I mentioned in my cover letter, uh, explaining, you know, why I want the position, uh, I truly do feel that it's the relationships between the classroom teachers and the students that makes the difference for our kids in the, uh, in the district. Um, educationally, you know, I'm a product, I'm a product of the Lowell Public Schools, and I'm happy to say that. Um, you know, I was born in Lowell, raised in Lowell. I started my career at the Washington Elementary School, went on to the Daley and the high school, uh, before graduating and going on to Merrimack College to, uh, receive my, um, undergrad degree in, in business administration. Um, and at that point in time, when I had, uh, started working in Lowell, in the community schools program and the extended time program, um, I realized that coming from a less traditional, uh, educational background, I really, uh, you know, was gonna be working in education. Um, it was worthwhile and, and really imperative that I go back to school myself and actually, um, receive some training in education. So I went back to UMass Lowell, and I'm happy to have said I did that, uh, received my, uh, master's degree in educational administration. You know, it was at the point in time where, um, Carla Brooks-Bier, our former superintendent, uh, tapped me for my current role in finance and operations, that I really, uh, realized that I was gonna be in education for the long run. And it, it wasn't just a career, it was really gonna be my, my calling, where I was gonna work for the rest of my, uh, career. Um, one of the things I, uh, realized at that time, again, kinda having that less traditional background was gonna be important for me to have the proper credentials to be in the various positions I was in. And if I was gonna be, uh, seeking a superintendency, it'd be important to, uh, to back that up. So I, again, went back to UMass Lowell, um, completed my doctorate in education and happily, uh, to report, just defended my dissertation and will be, uh, you know, officially graduating next weekend. So, um, educationally, that's, um, kinda where my background comes from. And it has helped shape, uh, the foundation for my, um, work as an educational leader. As I mentioned in the, uh, cover letter as well, I don't take this opportunity lightly to apply for the job. It's something I've really given a lot of, uh, thought and, and effort to. Uh, I'm at the point in my career where, uh, I'm ready for a superintendency. Um, I've worked for about twenty years in education. I'm in the middle of my career, uh, which I think is important. You know, I've, I've got twenty years under my belt, I've got another twenty years to go. Uh, I'm not at the end of my career, uh, trying to make this move. I, I think the job demands, uh, a lot of attention, the job demands someone, uh, really at this point in time, who can come to Lowell and who can create, uh, a long-range, uh, strategic, uh, vision and mission for the school district and also be able to be in that role to see the vision through. And I certainly do bring this, uh, to the table. Um, I love Lowell. You know, I love the Lowell Public Schools and I, I enjoy very much, uh, my work here in the community. Um, we have a very good school system. We're going in the right direction, uh, and I wanna work and continue the work to make it a great school system. So I hope by, uh, tonight being able to talk to you and have a conversation about my credentials, um, I will convince you that I am the next, uh, leader of the school system. So I look forward to our conversation tonight. Thank you.
Can I talk now?
You can talk now.
Thank you for that opening statement, Mr. Lang. I apologize for stepping on it. Um, I was just a little anxious, I guess. Let me get right into it. Um, there has been a lot of talk in the community about classroom experience and, uh, the importance of that in the superintendent. So my question to you is, you, as you mentioned, you do have a couple of years of classroom teaching experience in your background.
Correct.
Do you feel like that's enough, uh, to be able to truly, uh, understand the challenges that our classroom teachers go through on a daily basis? And not have there been other experiences in your career, um, that would, uh, give you that same type of, uh, feeling?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the question. I think, um, everything over the course of my career has really been about opportunities and, and opportunities that I've taken advantage of. Wait for the fire truck.
Can I add to my ten minutes for the fire truck?
Um, you know, the, the work that I did in, in Chelmsford, um, you know, was eye-opening. Originally, I hadn't, uh, intended on going into education. Um, I actually, when I was in, um, college, had, had thought about pursuing a, a law degree and going on to law school. Um, I had the opportunity to work for a law firm in college. Uh, one of the things that Merrimack, my undergrad school, really promotes is the co-op program and getting some real hands-on experience, uh, before you went to the workforce, which I, uh, truly believe in and feel in. And I had the experience to work at a law firm and realized I didn't wanna be a lawyer. Um, and I realized at that point in time, everything I had really done in my career was around working with kids. Whether it was, um, you know, jobs that I had going through high school and college, you know, camp counselor, um, working in, um, different, uh, sporting programs with kids. It all revolved around that, and then I had the opportunity to, to teach. And, um, again, I think, looking at my candidacy, um, I, I personally think it's more about kinda valuing the role of the teacher, understanding, uh, the role that they're in and supporting teachers. And I absolutely do. Um, you know, I come from a family of educators. Education is very important, um, to both me, uh, and my commute, and my, uh, family. And I have the utmost respect and admiration for teachers, and I think that's really, uh, what's important. And I think I've been able to balance, uh, and I wouldn't be sitting in, in front of you today with twelve years of experience as Deputy Superintendent if I had been in the classroom, uh, longer. My role very much, you know, for about eight years with the Director of Community Schools and the Extended Time Learning Program, um, was still teaching, in, in my opinion. You know, I was in schools, uh, during the school day, uh, working with teachers, working with building administrators, um, to develop programs for kids. Yes, the, the programs took place after hours, uh, but I have the sensitivity, uh, to what occurs in the classroom. Uh, and really, at the heart of everything we do, um, is the value of that instruction and the teaching and learning that takes place in the classrooms. And, um, I think you really have to look at my whole, uh, resume, um, kinda when making, uh, decisions. But, um, yeah, I, I absolutely do feel I have, uh, a, a good balance.
Great, thank you. So, you know, as the, uh, Director of Finance and Operations, I would say that probably there's nobody that knows the system better than you. I mean, you, you know all the, the broken windows and all the, all the issues that, that happen. So, given that, if you were the superintendent, you know, what, what's your vision? What would be, would it just be to continue, um, the, the, uh, the path that we're going on? Or is there something that Dr. Jay Lang would do differently, um, to drive toward a bigger vision?
Yeah. I appreciate the question because, um, you know, oftentimes, I think the, you know, working in a school system, and I've, I've worked here for quite some time, um, you know, the concern, you know, could be, well, you know, well, Jay, you know, takes on the role, you know, what would his vision be? You know, would it just be status quo? Would it be a change? You know, what would he do, uh, with the job? Um, and, you know, I actually really, um, feel strongly that the district is going in the right direction. It's the speed at which you get to the end results, um, that's kinda plaguing us at this point. And a lot of that really is directly related to funding, um, and having the proper funding to put the programs in place that are gonna help move our students. Um, I really think the next superintendent, one of the critical things that we're going to do is we need to create, uh, a long-term, uh, comprehensive strategic vision, uh, for the district. And we have to start looking multi-years out. So we've been in a little bit of a rut of kinda, you know, year to year reacting to different budget situations. But I think we really have to start looking, you know, five, ten years down the road. Um, and, you know, I've started to kinda sketch, you know, kinda Lowell 2025, what my vision for the school department would be. Um, what's really important with my style and I think Lowell, uh, is that collectively, we develop that vision, uh, that is, we put all stakeholders together when we're gonna create that vision. It has to involve, um, you know, students at the high school level. It has to involve, uh, parents, community members, business partners. Everyone has to be involved if you're really gonna have buy-in and you're gonna sell that mission long-term. Um, you know, I, uh, again, I, there are four kinda guiding principles, um, that, that I wanna see be part of that vision. Um, the, the kinda four-pronged, uh, approach. The first would really be, um, you know, improving the academic achievement of students for all students. You know, there's a lot of talk about what are we gonna do with our ELL population, or special needs populations. Uh, we have to look at them as, as all students. We have to educate every child every day in these, in our classrooms. Um, and if you look at the literature and the research on effective schooling and learning organizations and what really drives them, there are six key principles, uh, that have to go into that improvement of, um, educational, uh, learning. Uh, the first is you've gotta commit to a standards-based curriculum, and we've done that. We have to see that through, uh, with diligence. Um, second, you have to understand your resources and have really strategic resource allocation to make sure that you're targeting, uh, your investments and you're putting your money where you're gonna see the maximum amount of return. I think that is critical for us as a, as an organization. Um, the third is how you use data and, you know, really making data-driven decision-making. And we talk about that, and for years, we've been talking about the use of data. But I'll be honest with you, we're swamped right now, uh, with data. We have more data, um, than we could possibly probably use. We have to, to get the data in the hands of the teachers, uh, so that the data can easily be used to help them, uh, change their instruction and, uh, as they're working with, with kids in classrooms. Um, you know, fourth needs to be that intense focus on instruction and the intense look at what happens in the classroom during the day. There's nothing more important than happens in a regular classroom from eight AM to two PM every day. We have to support the teacher and the learning of the individual kids in the classrooms. Um, the fifth would be really strong distributed leadership. Uh, we have to have shared leadership, we have to have a shared vision of what effective leadership is in our schools and our district. Um, that would be an element. And then last, uh, you have to have targeted, uh, professional development. Um, professional development where we're just focusing on, uh, kinda the whole and all district stuff, um, is, is great in one respect, but we have individual schools with individual needs and each school is its own climate, it's its own community. And we really have to focus the limited professional development resources we have on, uh, hitting the instruction in the classroom in those schools. So my first kinda over-guiding, uh, focus would be that improved academic achievement for all students. Um, second is around educated equality. We have to, uh, recruit, develop and retain the best teachers that we possibly can for the kids in our district. They deserve no less. That has to be a focus of our work. Um, third is really, uh, community engagement. And we have to strengthen our ties with the business community, the nonprofit community. There's a lot of good work that happens in this district, um, but it's not enough. Uh, you know, we have great resources and, and I look at, you know, one group, um, that I really think, uh, we're under utilizing is, uh, Project Learn, um, that's there to kinda work with us, to help us seek some outside funding and some outside grant resources. I think we have to use them and organizations like them, um, to help move our mission forward. Uh, they can help us in areas that aren't our expertise. You know, we really are not good at public relations, at promoting an image for the school system. You know, educators educate, and we need to tap into the resources of the business community and the community partners to help us in those areas that just aren't our strength.
Dr. Lang, I'm sorry, um, I know you have one more point, but I have one more question that I wanna get in. I thank you for that thorough answer. That, that was a very thorough answer.
Maybe someone can share the other point later.
Yeah, maybe we could get that last point in. But there's one last question I did wanna ask you, and, uh, I'm intrigued by your candidacy because I think you see this, this district from three different perspectives. Uh, first is obviously as an administrator, second as a citizen, and finally, as a parent and of, of students in the school system. And I'm trying to decide if that's an advantage or a disadvantage. So I'm curious about what you think. Is it an advantage, uh, to be able to, uh, see it and, and use it from those three perspectives?
Yeah, it, it's an absolute advantage. Um, I mean, from, from administrator and working here, I know the nuts and bolts of this system better than anyone. Um, you know, we've been through difficult budget times. Uh, you know, you, Lowell is a complex system, it's a complex city, and I really do think you need to have your pulse on where everything is. And, and I really don't think you're gonna find a candidate that has a better feel for the district than I do. Um, as far as being a parent, uh, it can be challenging at times and it certainly, um, you know, has its ups and downs. But being a parent gives me a totally different perspective on what really is effective in schools, um, around, uh, collaboration, communication, um, you know, uh, two of my students, or my students, two of my, uh, children, um, you know, especially, thank you, our, uh, special needs students as well. So I've gone through varied processes in the district. I've seen what it's like from a parent's side to have to go through, um, an IEP process, to have to work with, um, you know, the special education department, to fight for services for your children. I've had to do that. And I think it gives me a perspective in my daily work to understand and really be able to empathize with, uh, parents and what perspective they're coming from, um, having that experience. So as difficult as it is from time to time, I think it's been absolutely invaluable, um, to really have a pulse on exactly what's happening in the district, and I wouldn't, uh, wouldn't have it any other way. And I do think it's a, and I am wrapping up. I do think it's, um, you know, important that, um, that my kids are educated here. I think it shows my faith, uh, in, in the system, my commitment to the system. Um, you know, I want the very best for my kids and I want the very best for every kid in, uh, the city of Lowell.
Thank you, Dr. Lang.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Lang. Implementing a philosophy and, and having the, the, the way of discussing is great, but I guess, um, it really, hiring the right principals and hiring, and then hiring the right teachers is really the important factor. What is your philosophy of going about recruiting leadership in our schools? Specifically, the principals?
Yeah, I think the, um, you didn't wanna hear about my fourth point, huh? I'm teasing. Uh, I think what's, you know, what's critical when it comes to, um, you know, hiring building-level administrators, um, we have to go out and we have to recruit the very best people and bring them into the city. Um, we can't afford to just post a position and hope people are gonna come to us. We have to network, we have to use the resources we have. We have to reach out to other districts, um, you know, who have, uh, you know, promising, uh, folks in their systems. We have a good partnership right now with UMass Lowell. We're trying to develop and we're actually working in collaboration with them, um, on a, a, a learn project where they're helping develop some, uh, district, uh, district administrators into future building administrators. Um, there's, there's some pathways that we have to create within the district to really enhance and focus, uh, some of our most skilled and, and qualified folks to get them ready to assume, uh, building leadership positions in the district. But I think it really starts with having a comprehensive, um, plan as to how we're gonna recruit and how we're gonna bring in the very best and brightest individuals to, um, to lead our school system. Um, it, it's not the day where you just sit back and post a job and you wait for people to come to you. You have to go out and get the very best. Um, and I think a lot of that is networking, a lot of it is resources. And, um, you know, then when you get them in, very similar to, uh, teachers, you know, I'm very proud of the induction program we have for teachers. We need to have an induction program for administrators so that, you know, administrators, this is a big district. This is a very challenging job, particularly with all the mandates that are, that are thrown at teachers and administrators. The new educator evaluation system is a full-time job for everyone working in buildings. And if that is really gonna be the focus of improving teaching and learning in classrooms, we have to help and, and work with directly, you know, the first three to five years administrators come into their roles, um, we have to support and develop them so that they're effective in their, in their schools. Um, so, you know, it's gotta be proactive as opposed to reactive.
Right. Uh, what, what, what skill sets are you looking for in, in a principal in any one of our elementary or middle schools?
I think for me, um, you know, myself, I, I have very high expectations for myself and I hold my staff to very high expectations. Um, it has to be someone who's driven, um, to, to succeed. Um, who, when you ask a question or you pose a problem to, it's, it's never, "Well, I don't think we can do that." It's, "How can we do that?" Um, yeah, I think that has to be the mantra, that has to be mentality, that we can do it. Um, I very much believe in shared leadership and, and taking on, uh, responsibility for, uh, both your own practice and individuals within your building, um, kinda having collective responsibility for the success of a school. So you have to have that shared vision. Um, you know, a top-down approach doesn't work for me. Um, you know, it has to be a team player. You know, it's gotta be someone who can work nice with others, um, who's willing to, um, you know, commit to the long hours and the long, uh, workday that it's gonna take to get the job done. It's gotta be someone who's reflective, you know, who, who understands what their strengths that they bring to the table are and also understands where, where their opportunities are, where they need to, uh, push their own professional learning, their own professional development, and be able to have those open and honest conversations about where, um, their shortcomings might be and where they wanna to take them. And if someone is willing to, um, put in the time and commit and to see that, uh, kinda personal development through, then I'd be willing to work with them, um, to, uh, really foster their, uh, their growth and development in the job and to, uh, to make them a part of our team.
Being in the district for a long period of time, you've obviously had some successes and failures. Can you comment on what you've learned from some of your failures and how you would take that in, in leadership, potentially, if you're selected as a superintendent?
You know what? I think some of the, um, the areas where you can grow, you can develop and you can change, um, really have to do around, uh, process and they're more, uh, kinda process issues or ways to improve processes in the district. You know, I personally believe in being very transparent in everything you do. So, if I make a decision, um, probably to my fault sometimes, I'll explain, you know, why I made a decision, how, you know, what I took into consideration when making that decision. Um, it's important to me that, you know, someone will never question what I did or why I did something and not have the background information. You can disagree with me and we'll have disagreements from time to time, but I'll always tell you why I made a particular, um, decision. And I think when it comes to, uh, you know, some of the things that we can, um, say improve upon, um, communication is, is huge. Being transparent is huge, really letting people see why you're doing what you're doing, when you're doing it. Um, I, I feel those would be two. Maybe, uh, issues where we possibly weren't as transparent as we could have been or issues where you've had, um, you know, the very best interests of kids at, at heart, but maybe you didn't communicate that well, um, to the folks. And you didn't get the information out in a fashion that was easily understandable and, um, uh, directable by the folks that received the information.
Just the last question that I've, I've asked everybody, and I think it's, can you give me an example of where you have a person you reports to that you have to work with? What, that's simply not performing up to standards? What steps do you employ, uh, to help improve that person?
Yeah, I think you have to, well, start, and I, I start with the, the notion that, um, no one comes to work to intentionally do a bad job, right? So everyone comes to work trying to do the- to intentionally do a bad job, right? So everyone comes to work trying to do the best that they can. I think, you know, you have to work with people. I think you have to set very clear expectations for what you demand, how you're going to get there, and how you're going to hold someone accountable. I've never had an issue with an individual, obviously, no one likes it if you get to the point in the relationship where it's not working and you have to part ways. But I've never had someone come to me and say, well, jeez, this caught me out of the blue. I had no idea you weren't happy with my work. And I think it's because the approach I would take is being very upfront and direct. I would tell you exactly what you're doing well, exactly where you need to change, how you're going to change. We'll put a timeline together to say what you're going to do to be successful. And then really, it's up to the individual to rise to the occasion, to rise to meeting those expectations. Education in urban centers is not for the weak and the faint of heart. It's hard work by all, by the teachers in the classrooms, the administrators in the buildings, and central office. You have to be committed. It really is a calling. You have to be committed to that. But I do believe if you just set clear expectations and you hold people to high standards, you can have those professional difficult conversations and not have it become personal. You keep it professional.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Lang, could I ask, and again, this is a question I've asked across the board, as you consider moving into this new position, could you share with us kind of your overarching educational approach, the kind of research you use to back up your educational decision-making, and any pedagogy kind of protocols that you feel are particularly important in implementing here in the district?
Sure. I think, and what's important about that is that your personal philosophy melds with the philosophy of the district. And obviously, it does. I've been able to work in Lowell for a long time. I think my personal philosophy is really about educating the whole child. And we have to in Lowell, not unlike other communities, but we really have to pay attention to a child's academic, social, emotional, and physical needs. We have to hit all four. To just focus on academics with some of the students that are in our district, it would be really failing them, and it would be doing them a disservice if we didn't focus in the other areas as well. Kids have to feel safe when they come to school. School has to be a welcoming environment where kids, you know, even if they have issues going on outside of the school, can put those down and really focus on being well-educated and well-taken care of in the school environment. When it comes to academics, I think, you know, I've had an incredible opportunity to work with great superintendents over the years. I worked, when I first began with community schools, an extended time with George Sappasaris when he was here, and, you know, his work with the whole desegregation plan and the physical building of the schools, you know, I took away the importance of that. When Carla came on board and I had an opportunity to work with her, her focus on, you know, really implementing a standards-based curriculum and having instruction be at the core of everything you do, you know, just resounded with me, and I take that away from Carla. When Chris came on board, I think it was the importance of relationships and the importance of collaboration and working with individuals and, you know, really maximizing the return based on the positive relationships and the trusting and the honest relationships that you develop with staff. And then with Jean, it has really just been her, you know, undying commitment to, you know, individual kids and serving, you know, their individual needs, you know, particularly the underserviced or underprivileged kids, and kind of having them and the kids at the heart of your discussion. And when you're making decisions, really having kids and what's in the best interest of kids in everything you do. You know, one of the kind of analogies that someone said that I really took to is, you know, you always kind of have to have a vision. You always have to have kind of glasses on, and you look at things through the lens of what's in the best interest of kids and kids' learning. You may from time to time have to put on a different lens, but you never take off the glasses that really have the kids at the center of what you're doing. So that's important. The thing I mentioned earlier when we were talking a little bit about what I would want to do in the district, and again, this is kind of another takeaway from Carla when she was here as superintendent, when you really do think about it, putting the best, most qualified teacher in front of a student in every given day is critically the most important thing we do. Supporting that teacher, providing them with the necessary professional development and supports to make their job better and to allow them to really work with students in a better fashion is critical to everything that we do. We have to preserve that time, you know, the actual, the core instruction, the tier-one instruction that occurs in schools, that has to be sacred time. It has to be sacred time that, you know, kids are working with teachers, and there's no replacement for that. So when it even comes to scheduling or working around the day, that time has to be kind of held harmless. And that time has to be focused on meeting the individual learning needs of every student in that classroom. And it doesn't happen easy. It's a long process. It's a committed process. You need educators to be committed to professionally developing themselves and their partners within schools, again, collectively holding each other accountable, helping each other out. But really, there's just no replacement for putting the best qualified teacher in the classroom and preserving, you know, that core instruction that occurs from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. every day, and keeping that at the heart of all the decisions that we make.
As you know, certainly here in the Lowell Public School District, like across the Commonwealth, we did implement a new evaluation process. For yourself as an evaluator, having to evaluate your direct reports and kind of from the overall perspective of a district-wide viewpoint, how would you see that in terms of how successful we've been in that implementation and how you want to ensure that we fully implement it over the ensuing years?
Yeah. That has been a whole mind shift and exhausting work in schools, to be quite honest with you. I think the reason it's been successful in Lowell is because of the way the new evaluation system was rolled out. So right from the get-go, you had the relationships between the administration, the teachers' union, when we were developing the whole protocol, when we were looking at the new regulations and how we were going to implement them. I do believe that collaborative relationship between both sides coming together to work on that was huge. The new teacher evaluation system and the rating system has really changed everything we do in schools. And it's focused the attention of, you know, both the principal, the assistant principal in schools, of really focusing on exactly what's happening in classrooms every day. So I think that, you know, that has been good because the focus is now on, not that it wasn't before, but it has to be, on frequently, you know, going into classrooms, doing walkthroughs, both announced and unannounced. I think key for me and what was really interesting to see in the new evaluation system was the input from the person who's being evaluated, so the teacher. You know, in the past, we oftentimes had a system in place where the principal would go in and do scheduled observation, and you'd get some feedback. But this new system really forces both sides to come together and to agree on what, you know, what you're going to evaluate me on, how are you going to evaluate me. Again, there's no surprises in the system. So you go in knowing these are my personal strengths. This is what I'm working on. Here's how I'm going to get there. And it's a much more inclusive process. So I think that has really opened up dialogue. And I think a challenge for us going forward as a district is how you actually kind of create the common language across schools. We have common language being developed within schools about what we're looking for in instruction. But how we're going to actually implement that across the district to maintain, you know, the high expectations and the high level of rigor across all schools. So that's kind of the next challenge for us. But I very much like the idea that it's reflective. It forces an individual to think about their strengths, their areas that they need to work on. You know, it's not making a judgment about, you know, one particular day and how you did in one lesson. It's really a holistic approach and a holistic look at what it is going to take to, you know, change someone's practice and really have that practice be focused on student learning and student engagement.
I think this is probably going to be my last question. Thinking about how you would move into this new role, and it's certainly, despite your time in the district, despite the level you've been working at, this is new, you know, moving into the superintendency. How would you, you know, one of the key things is going to be kind of establishing what the district culture is for yourself and your leadership team, for teachers, for students, for parents, and for our community in general. How would you kind of describe the community and the kind of sense of culture that you'd want to establish for people when they look at the district and they have a sense of what it is we do? What would you want them to be seeing?
A couple of things on that. I think, you know, what was really interesting to me today, thank you, I'm getting the two-minute warning. What was interesting to me today, I had the opportunity, like the other candidates, to actually go around to a few of the schools. And I obviously go around to the schools more than the other candidates do and have relationships with the folks in the building. But I was at the Stockloafer today, the Bailey, and then I ended up at the high school. It was what was really interesting to me when I was talking to staff in some of the schools, it was a different conversation. I think, you know, staff, previously even, teaching staff, when we had conversations, you know, it was very focused about my role in the district at that point in time, and it wasn't about, you know, Jay possibly taking on, you know, the superintendent's role. So the conversation was very different. You know, I think one of the keys to me, obviously, I know the district. I know Lowell. I know the school. I know the players. But I think what's going to be important to me is that I really kind of listen with a different ear as I start the job, because I think people are going to want to approach me and talk to me differently than they have in the past. And they're going to want to catch my attention or really have a more focused concentration about that district vision. You know, I had that few questions today. You know, where do you really want to bring this district? You know, what do you think about the district? And, you know, again, I told them, I said, we're not a broken district. You know, we're really doing some very, very good work and some hard work. You know, more than half of our schools are Level One and Two. Yes, we need all of our schools to be progressing towards Level One. And I think one of the issues that we really have to focus on is kind of building that capacity and replicating the positive work that happens in the Level One schools, making that happen in the Level, you know, Two and Three schools, and almost going through a turnaround like that occurred at the Merkland. But I think a lot of it, again, just to get back to your question, is going to be kind of listening and working with people, sharing my vision. When I had the chance to talk to folks today about that, they were interested, and they actually want to be part of creating that vision. And I think what was exciting to some of them was actually taking a look at, you know, what would Lowell look like in 2025? Where do we want that to go? And again, I don't think that's the superintendent's role to solely, thank you, the superintendent's role to solely set out, but it is collectively. That can be our work. And I think the first six months on the job for me would really be, you know, listening to folks, working with, you know, the business community, the nonprofits, the parents, the students, the teachers, and starting to craft that vision for where we're going. And I think collectively with the school committee, if we do that, we can all agree on what the priorities are going to be moving forward, and we can actually implement that vision. And again, that's what really excited me. And I have to say, after those visits today, I was more excited about coming here tonight because of the reception I received and because of the kind of the different conversations I've had. So it was very fun and different and something I obviously would look forward to continuing.
Thank you. I am just going to take one quick minute. Just to be fair, I wanted to thank you also for convening the site visit here last week. It was great to, you know, we got some great information from your colleagues and past supervisors, and it was really very informative. And I appreciate you taking the time to pull that together for us. Thank you. I appreciated the short commute myself. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Lang. Thank you so much for putting your name forward for this position. So I just have a few questions. Aside from the business operations, can you tell us a bit about the other areas of curriculum that you're directly involved in in the district?
Sure. I think one of the great parts about my work in Lowell, again, working with the various superintendents and even, you know, the assistant superintendents, you know, Claire Abrams and Jean when she was in the curriculum office, and Ted Rorack that preceded her, we really have been a very cohesive and strong administrative team. And when we make decisions as a district, I think we're stronger because we have varied voices in the room and varied perspectives. So when we're making decisions about, you know, curriculum, or if we're going to implement, you know, the high school a few years back, no, I'm sorry, this is the middle school, was going to look at a new math series. And we need to talk about, you know, what steps we would actually put in place to evaluate that program. How are we going to involve the different folks that were going to use it, you know, teacher groups, focus groups, even getting a parent perspective on, you know, the new math program and how it was going to be used. I've had the firsthand experience of working, you know, as part of that team, being in the room when the decisions have been made. Obviously, you know, your candidates that are coming forward for the position of superintendent have a heavier concentration in one area over another. And typically in school systems, you're going to find folks that either come from, you know, the finance and operations, the curriculum instruction, or the student support background. But I think in Lowell, what's been so important is that regardless of what particular niche a person has a stronger expertise in, it's the collective work and the fact that as a strong, functioning administrative team, that we're able to really kind of make decisions and move the district forward. So I like when we're even making budget decisions, you know, I want Claire at the table, and I want Janine at the table to be giving me those other perspectives. I would operate in the same fashion. I would surround myself with, you know, the smartest and the best individuals that, you know, would be making decisions around curriculum and instruction and student support and special ed. I think my role, and I think one of my strengths I bring to the table, is I really can engage people. I can bring people in to the process. And to me, the process is important. So actually having the right people at the table and having the right people there to make decisions is what really, you know, I kind of bring as a strength of this. But I think it's my experience over the years, working as part of that admin team, that has kind of shaped both my curriculum instruction and special ed student support interests.
Okay. Can you outline for us any strategies that you may have employed or implemented to increase parent engagement? And what metrics did you use to measure your success?
Sure. I think, you know, parent engagement, you know, a couple of things I'd like to say on that. The work of engaging parents in schools is never-ending. It's never going to stop. The onus is on the school staff. It's on the superintendent. It's on the, you know, the teachers, the administrators in the building to make those connections with parents. One of the things we have to do is really make the school and coming into the school as inviting as we possibly can. You know, we have to reach parents how they want to be involved and where they want to be, how they want to interact with schools. Some parents are very happy, you know, receiving an email, you know, receiving a text, an alert, kind of telling them what's going on. Other parents have the ability and the interest to come into schools and work in classrooms. And they want to actually work with an individual classroom teacher. They want to volunteer their time. We have to take parents and meet them where they want to be met. I think a nice way to kind of break down things, you know, example at the Stockloafer a month or two ago, you know, they do an incredible parent event, more like a potluck supper, and I think food oftentimes, you know, brings people out, and it's a nice way to kind of break down barriers. But they do an incredible, oh, hundreds of people and parents and students come to these events. I think that's great, just as a hook to kind of get parents into schools. The other thing is it's not necessarily the case where we have to get parents always into schools if they don't feel comfortable there. I think the role of the superintendent being, you know, a public figure, a role model, being visible in the community, and if they're accessing and talking to parents, you know, outside of the school, you know, it's kind of funny, well, it's not funny. My kids don't find it funny. No, you know, my family won't come food shopping with me anymore because, you know, I will constantly, I'll be in the aisle, and, you know, parents want to come up and talk to you. You're standing at the deli, and you're having a conversation about, you know, someone doesn't understand the math curriculum or the, you know, the way we teach math these days. And I like that. You know, I like being accessible, and I think that's a way to engage parents and be involved. I think the superintendent, it's critically important that they're a member of the community, that they're seen in the community, that they're visible, that they're approachable. And that's what I bring to the table. And I think what I would really do with the school leaders and the leadership teams are figure out those ways that we can really get into families, you know, survey them, talk to them. If they don't respond to a text or an email, call them. The parent liaisons in the schools do incredible work. I can tell you, at the Stockloafer, one of my visits today, I walked in, and Tim Knopf, the parent liaison, is making phone calls home, you know, because a kid didn't come to school or someone forgot work. And I think it's the relationships that are really important and putting the right things in place that are going to push those relationships and foster and develop them. So I think that's the role of the superintendent in that.
Okay. Here I am waving as if I'm trying to get your attention at a regular meeting. I apologize. So to that end, over the past, at least in my tenure, we've had several initiatives driven towards parent engagement, you know, surveys, text messaging, you know, whatever manner of communication. And, you know, we've really never gotten a true measurement of that. And I suppose I'm asking of you, what would you do to improve that so that we see a much better outcome?
Can I ask you a question? An outcome, I guess, in what way?
In terms of engagement, in terms of feedback, in terms of, you know, rather, if we're sending out 4,000 surveys and we're only getting back 100 surveys, and we're only getting back a hundred surveys, what are we doing wrong? And why is that not driven so that we're getting a better response? I mean, y- you know, you have the advantage of being with, both within the district for a number of years, so we know your work, and we know your history, so, and we know your, you know, your capacity within the district, so that's why I ask these questions.
Yeah, I think the, um, again, for me, you know, we do a survey, um, so let's say the food service survey, that we do as an example. I have found that either sending out a, a paper survey, or even that one we try to do electronically, folks are really only gonna participate in the survey if they're, uh, either really happy with the service, or they're really displeased with the service. And the vast majority of our parents, I think, are in the middle, uh, you know, in a lot of these areas. And I think, um, just a lack of response, a no response, doesn't necessarily mean, um, that folks aren't happy with the direction that the, the district is going in or the initiative is going in. So I personally wouldn't put too much in the fact that, um, you know, the response rates are low. I, I think what we have to do is really just kinda, we can't stop, you know, so if it, if it's gonna take, uh, but it's just very difficult. Like, let's say we were gonna move to, you know, phone calls and actually individually kinda talking to people to get results. It's hard to then just take those results and try to generalize them across the district. I think, you know, that we don't stop what we're doing. I think we, uh, continue to look to ways to, um, you know, keep the communication, uh, going. Then maybe new technologies, you know, if we're, we're surveying also, there's a new feature in the, um, the phone system, the, the connected system that we're using, that allows for parents to do a quick, um, a little survey. So if you, you receive a phone call, perhaps we could tell parents ahead of time, you know, "We'd like you to, "We'd like you to hold off on, uh, you know, a Thursday night, there's gonna be a little phone call coming, and you know it's gonna take you two minutes, you're gonna have to hit, you know, one if you agree, two if you disagree." You know, some ways to get some feedback from folks. It's just work that we can't stop doing. It's, it's, it's been an issue, and it will continue to be an issue, but it has to just be at the center of what we're doing.
Okay. I have one more question.
Sure.
And again, this is the advantage or disadvantage of having worked in the district. How do you propose you will face the challenge of having multiple family members employed in your chain of command in the district? This also applies to disciplinary, disciplinary action, contract negotiations, grievances, et cetera.
Sure. I'm happy to address that. I think the, the way I will approach it is the way I've approached everything else, which is professionally. And, you know, I hold myself to a very high standard, and I would hold others to that high standard. I've made no, um, you know, excuse about it, you know, my, uh, I am from Lowell, right? Uh, my family is from Lowell, um, I'm from a family of educators. There are a lot of families of educators that work in the Lowell Public Schools. My wife actually started working in the Lowell Public Schools, teaching before I did, you know. We didn't know at the point where, uh, we started working that I was gonna work up through the system to be the assistant superintendent or deputy superintendent at the time others were working. I think the, the issue you have to do is really, again, it's around transparency. It's about, um, you know, letting folks know what those relationships are. It, it's not only familiar relationships, but there are friend relationships, there are acquaintance relationships. Uh, you know, Lowell for a big city is a small city, and, uh, as I'm sure you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of folks that know, that are related to, and you just have to hold yourself to a high standard. If, um, I, I do pride myself, and I've always had an open relationship with the school committee. If I ever had a point in time as a superintendent where I felt conflicted in any way, I would have no problem going to the school committee and say, "Here's a problem," or "Here's an issue that has come up." You know, "Here's how I'm thinking about it, you know, here's a potential conflict, um, this is what I'm proposing." I think the only way we would ever do that is, thank you, is if we, uh, we just address those issues head-on. But, uh, you know, again, I'm very proud of the fact that I'm from Lowell, I'm very proud of the fact that, uh, you know, I was educated in Lowell, like several of my family members and other members of this community are. You know, they attend the Lowell Public Schools, they graduate, they come back, they wanna work in Lowell. I see that as a strength, that people really, um, appreciate the community that they live in, they appreciate the community that they, um, they work in, and they wanna give back. You just have to put up those safeguards, and I, I appreciate that. But again, I just believe it starts with transparency and having open conversations, if anyone at any point in time, uh, ever has any concerns. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Lang, and congratulations for making it to the finals.
Thank you.
Uh, my first question for you is, um, a large percentage of children in Lowell attend private schools. Do you think it is important for public schools to try to serve all of the children of the city? Why or why not? And what would you do to determine why, or what have you done, to determine why people are not choosing Lowell Public Schools?
Would you mind reading the first part of the question back to me?
No, not at all. A large percentage of children in Lowell attend private schools. Do you think it is important for public schools to try to serve all the children in the city?
Yeah, I mean, I think at the very, um, core of what we do, um, is we want to provide programming that will meet and address the needs of every student in Lowell, in Lowell. You know, families want choice, you know, families like choice. I choose to educate my chil- uh, children in the Lowell Public Schools because I think it's the very best education that they can receive. Other parents may have, um, different issues, or they may have a different perspective. Oftentimes, I'll run into a parent that, um, say, you know, attended St. Margaret's School themselves as, as a child, and they, they like the proclamal education, and they wanna continue having their child, um, you know, attend, uh, St. Margaret's School. A lot of it is just a lineage thing. You know, I think what we have to do is really, um, develop and foster and promote the best programming that we possibly can. We know we can meet every child's needs, but at some point, uh, you know, parents do want, um, choice. You know, parents do want a, a selection of offerings, and parents do have to decide what's in the best interest of, of their particular child. They may feel that, you know, the learning opportunities that we're providing don't quite meet the needs of their particular child. One of the things that we don't do, that I actually think would be, um, you know, very valuable data for us, is almost like an exit interview, when a child, you know, who's enrolled in the public schools decides to leave. We do track where the, um, child goes, as far as if they're in Lowell and they go to a charter school, if they're in Lowell and they move out of state. But that's an area where I actually would like to have either the, uh, you know, the folks in the resource center or parent liaisons in school actually make a firsthand, um, uh, reach out to the parents, to have a discussion about, you know, why they left. I totally get it if they move to a different community, you know, you move out of state, that's, that's totally understandable. But, you know, is there a particular facet of our program that, you know, isn't meeting their needs, and why? And if we start to see some repetition and some consistency in themes that, that come from that, then I would wanna, uh, have the district respond to that, and possibly either revamp programs or provide different offerings that are gonna meet their needs.
Thank you. I'm sorry. My next question is, could you please tell us the most difficult administrative predicament you have found yourself in, and how you handled it, and how you arrived at your decision?
You know, it's, it's tough to talk about the most difficult, I think, um, you know, I mean, one of the things that I, you know, have had some direct, um, play in responsibility in is obviously budgeting, and, you know, and finances. And I think, you know, since I came and into my current position back in two thousand and three, over those twelve years, I think, uh, nine of those years were technically years that we had to look to, uh, reduce budgets as opposed to adding positions. And, um, you know, those are difficult, those are difficult conversations. Those are difficult, uh, predicaments you find yourself in, uh, because the, the needs of the district outweigh the available resources. I think, you know, that's the point in time where I know myself and the previous superintendents and, and central office staff have had to look at things, you know, with, again, the child lens. And what, you know, when we make recommendations, you know, what is going to be the least disruptive to continuing the education that the, that the children are receiving. So I think around budgeting situations, I mean, there have been other, um, situations that are difficult to deal with on different levels, as far as, um, you know, say, student support issues. You know, one issue that actually we've been dealing with, uh, lately is obviously we're, we're a district with a high, uh, low-income, um, student population. So, you know, over seventy percent of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's a huge statistic. Three out of four of our kids, you know, are, are living below the poverty level and require, uh, assistance for lunch. We see it in the schools, you know, I mean, y- you have kids that, you know, whether they fill, fill out the free and reduced lunch application or not, you know, for multiple reasons may not, you know, who need lunch at, at school. That's kinda more of a social issue that we're dealing with. One of the things I'm actually happy to report, and, and will be providing to the school committee at the, the next meeting, we've been doing a lot of work, um, you know, to try to address that. And we're actually working with the food service folks and the folks at the state level. I believe we're going to be able to qualify under a community eligibility provision, um, for this coming year, to possibly be able to offer free and reduced, I'm sorry, uh, free, uh, breakfast and lunch to all Lowell Public School students at no cost whatsoever. That is work that, uh, I think is incredibly important for everyone. Not only does it address the students who we know qualify, but it also removes the stigma of, you know, receiving a free lunch so that every student that, that comes to Lowell would get free breakfast and lunch. I think that would be a huge thing for us. And I think, you know, it's those kind of issues that, um, that challenge us. You know, a third example, again, looking more at, you know, the needs of our students and really understanding their needs. When I was at the Stockloa for our budget walkthrough, I was walking out, and one of the city nurses, uh, was talking to me about the, uh, the vision van that you might see at some of the schools, it's a big yellow, uh, van. And we got to talking, and I was talking about, you know, what it was and what it does. And, and basically, it's through a partnership, and I think it's partnerships that what make the Lowell Public Schools so significant. This partnership with, uh, Massachusetts, um, Boston Hospitals around Eyes and Ears. They actually have a van that comes up that does free, uh, vision screening for our students, that will give free glasses, uh, to our students if they, you know, can't see. And I actually got a little tour of the van, and I talked to the, um, the doctor from Boston who was up for the day, you know, about the, the great work that they do, and the fact, you know, the, the kids are waiting to get their eyes checked that day. You know what, the most important thing in their day, excuse me, was getting glasses. And, you know, you can't expect them to be fully engaged in the academic work going on if they can't see the work. It's those kind of things that I think makes Lowell strong, and I think it's those partnerships that I would promote and, and, uh, keep in the city. When I talked to that individual, the doctor from Boston, about, you know, how do we, we, uh, accelerate this? How do we make this available to more kids? One of the things that they had, uh, suggested was, well, if we could ever have an actual clinic or a site, you know, in one of your schools, we wouldn't have to have the van come up to Lowell, uh, you know, once a month or twice a month for this. And it got me thinking, if we're going to actually be putting a, um, you know, a new high school together, and we're gonna build a new Lowell High School, why wouldn't we build right into the, um, design, a whole health service wing? You've got, you know, three to thirty-five hundred kids, you know, a captive audience at that school all day long. Instead of having a child have to be, you know, dismissed from school, go to the eye doctor, come back, lose learning time, why couldn't we, we actually open a, an eye clinic right in the school? I think that'd be, you know, innovative, uh, they would staff it, it wouldn't cost us anything. That's a service that we could provide to our kids, not only at the high school. We could work with, uh, the Family Resource Center, uh, John Decotto, and possibly utilize our buses that are off-tier, uh, from the kindergarten pickups, and have them actually bring kids to the high school from our elementary and middle schools, take care of their vision needs, and then get them back to school. So I think it's just different ways of, of thinking about doing things, but I think Lowell is just such a unique city, and it just has such unique needs that, um, you know, that's the work that I like doing, and I think that's the, that would be the focus of, uh, of my superintendentcy if given that option, that chance.
Still have time? Okay, thanks. Could you give some s- specific examples how you have worked to implement project-based learning in Lowell Public Schools?
Yeah, we actually talked about this a little bit, um, uh, today at the high school, uh, when I was meeting with the, um, with the students. I had, thank you. I had the opportunity, as I mentioned earlier in the night, um, to actually participate in the co-op program at, um, Merrimack when I was going through, and it was invaluable. You know, one of the things that we really have to focus on, and I, it was discussing with the, uh, the headmaster today and the, the curriculum, Amy McLeod, the curriculum director, was about finding opportunities for our kids to really have those firsthand experiences. So, you know, their junior and senior year, you know, developing and fostering extranips with, uh, local companies. You know, we've got banks downtown, we've got, you know, real estate agents, engineering firms. We've got a captive audience of, of folks. If we could actually line up our high school students to have some, you know, extranips, if that's what we wanna call them, uh, some real, you know, kinda project-based learning and experiential learning before they graduate, to have some sense of what they might like to do when they go on to college, I think that'd be a great thing. We do it at, at a limited role right now at the high school, but I think that is just, it's an area that's ripe for, for development. And I think it's an area that, when you look at our community partners, it'd be an easy way for them to get engaged, and I'm sure they'd want to. You know, you'd have folks at the, you know, um, the Lowell Sun that would wanna work with folks, kids that potentially have a journalism background or an interest in, in journalism. You would have, uh, folks, you know, that might wanna go work at Enterprise Bank, if they think that they might wanna do banking. And it's not just finances, you know, we might be able to actually have folks who have a, a desire for marketing, you know, to go work in a marketing department at one of these companies. I think it's those kind of experiences that we really have to, um, to develop. It's gonna take a dedicated staff, and it's gonna take dedicated individuals to make that happen. But yeah, I absolutely think that's the, um, the, the way to go. And I, you know, a firsthand experience of how that worked and helped me, as I was trying to develop as a student, you know, those are, are things that I would certainly, uh, try to enhance. We have some going on right now, um, but that would be a focus.
Just hold for another minute? Okay, this one might take longer, though. How do you plan to raise the performance of the lowest-achieving students without neglecting the highest-performing students, as well as those who fall in the middle?
Do, do I have time for the response? I, I wanna respond, I just, uh, can I go?
It's coming out of Mr. Conway's tongue.
All the better.
I got the question in, that's all.
You know, wh- when we look at that, one of the complaints that I hear the most, uh, from parents is, you know, you have a lot of programming for your struggling students, special needs students. You have some programming for the, you know, enrichment students, you've got the lyceum, you've got some, um, enrichment programming happening. But, you know, my student is, is a middle-of-the-road student, you know, how, you know, are they gonna fall through the cracks? How are we meeting their needs? And I think the, the first and most important thing that we do is focus as a district collectively on the tier-one instruction, right? The general classroom instruction that takes place during the day. We have to work with teachers to help them differentiate their instruction for students. You know, I give the example of, you know, you go into a, a classroom, and again, the, the job of teaching these days is just so difficult. You've got a, a group of students in front of you, and you've got, you know, your low, your middle, your high achievers. You almost have to go into that lesson with, you know, multiple lesson plans, and you've gotta be able to provide instruction to this group of folks this way, be pushing students over here, be doing remedial work with other students. It's, it's a daunting task, but I think the only way we're gonna do that is really investing in strategic professional development for staff so that they can do that, so that that tier-one instruction is, um, really top-notch. I think the second way you do that is starting to really take a look at some blending learner op- learning opportunities, and, uh, you know, k- starting the work during the school day, particularly around technology. As you know from my work, I'm a big fan and supporter of the use of technology, but, um, you know, we have some subscription-based programs and some remedial programs that we, uh, utilize during the school day. There is no reason, and we need to extend the learning day for kids, there's no reason why we can't push that and actually have that learning continue after hours. So that when the child goes home, if they need extra English language development or extra, um, uh, time working on a math assessment, that they're jumping on their computer at home, or we're giving them a piece of technology to take home, uh, to continue that learning. So I think it's really, it's twofold. You have to educate all children, I don't think you can, uh, pick a particular subgroup to focus on. It starts with that tier-one instruction, uh, and then I think the way we're really gonna go over the top is by, um, by focusing on the blended learning and some of the, uh, technology-driven initiatives that can take place, um, outside of the school day, but that will enhance the opportunity for the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Dr. Lang. Uh, I'm glad to hear that you actually go food shopping with the family, that's very impressive, by the way. Back, uh, a few minutes ago, one of my colleagues mentioned about the hiring process, uh, principals, uh, leaders. Could you, um, could you just elaborate a little bit as far as the actual process itself, or the mechanics of the hiring process of administrators, and whether it would be consistent throughout the entire system?
Sure. It, it has to be, right? I think the, um, the importance of, and I think it was Mr. Leary's question, the importance of, you know, recruiting and hiring the best qualified, uh, staff and the best staff that we possibly can to help out our students, again, has to be a transparent process, and I think it has to be consistent. You know, we have, uh, different panels that will empower at different, uh, levels of the organization when we're going through hiring. And I think, um, you know, the only times in the past that, uh, again, you, you post a job, ten people apply, one person's happy, nine aren't, um, and, you know, that's, that's kinda how it, how it ends. What I don't wanna have is ever be criticized on the process. So I think it's, it's critically important that you put, um, consistent folks of, of, uh, people together. If you're applying for a principalship at school A, and you're applying for a principalship at school B, that the process is the same at both, and that it's consistent from year to year, that you don't change the process, you know, one year over the next. So I think that's, it, it's very important that you do that. I think that's what's fair, that's what's equitable, and, um,
So, so you would implement a, a, uh, consistent process right across the board, then?
Absolutely, and I think what's, what's also key to that is, again, when I'm doing the hiring for a position or if someone else is, I try to surround myself with people, uh, you know, who are smarter than me. who are smarter than me in varied areas, who are going to bring a different perspective to the table. When we look at the composition of those committees, I think it's important to obviously have the different stakeholders who are going to work in a particular school with that leader, but it's also important to bring an outside help if need be. I mean, we have strong partnerships right now with Middlesex and UMass Lowell, and if we're hiring an educational expert, you know, why not take their expertise and have them be part of the solution or part of the hiring process? But again, what's critical is that it's the same process for every position, and it's the same process for year after year. I would commit to you to do that, and I would see that through.
I thank you for your answer. The next question is, during the preparation of the annual budget, how would you include the various stakeholders from within the schools and the community, or would you?
Yeah, I absolutely would, and we do now. I mean, I think the way that we put the budget together, and again, I know you're familiar with it because it's our budget, the work really starts, you know, right after the holidays, right after Christmas. I go out and we work with the individual building staff to, you know, identify existing positions, talk about budget needs and priorities for the following year. I think it has to start at the school level, and then it feeds up to the district level, and then ultimately works with the school committee. What I think is important as we go through that whole process is that the values and the objectives and the goals of the school system come true at each of those levels. So we reach agreement before we really even start the process on what the values are, and I think that's important. I think it's important for the individual school folks who actually have potentially, you know, different goals and different objectives because of their unique needs. Every school in Lowell is a different school. Every school, you know, has a different climate and culture, and you feel it when you go in the schools. So different schools have different priorities. I think we have to have some autonomy and allow them to put programs and systems in place that are really going to benefit them, but again, I think transparency is important, I think involving all folks. One area that I don't think we, you know, we do work, and I know the finance subcommittee will have meetings, will have public meetings. One community that we don't really involve in the budget process, as I think about it, is really the business community or, you know, the nonprofit community. And going forward, there really may be some kind of, you know, get some bang for your buck to educate the business community around what our needs are. You know, Lowell is a resilient city. Anytime we've ever needed anything, if we put it out there that we need something, someone comes forward. And I think, you know, maybe if we actually, you know, worked with the business community, again, a group like Project Learn, who's got a lot of different partners at the table, fill them in on our budget needs, on our scenarios, let them know what our state funding looks like. You know, another group, say the Lowell Plan. You know, we could go and present to the Lowell Plan, you know, what the, here's our ten-year plan, here's what we're seeing through, these are our shortfalls in the budget, we're looking multi-year down the road, because I do think we really need to have a ten-year outlook and not go year to year. Engage them in the discussion so that they can be champions for us when we're fighting for public resources.
I thank you. Next question is, as you've mentioned, and we've sat through some very difficult budgets where we had to make some cuts, as superintendent of schools, Dr. Lang, in a budget of one-hundred-and-sixty million-plus dollars, if we had to cut one percent, where would you go after that one percent, and where would, would there be a specific area or that you would examine first, and what might you examine last?
Yeah, I think the, you know, the practice has really been making an inclusive process. So I don't think it's really just the superintendent's role to go and make that, you know, the cut or the recommendations. I think it starts with really the collective work of the administration and the school committee, setting the values and the priorities that are going to shape the budget. From that, I think the discussion has always been, as we include the stakeholders in the discussions developing the budget, if there were going to be reductions, I think we also have to include the same stakeholders and the same school folks to talk about how those reductions would really impact learning. I would never take an approach, you know, sitting at central office saying, okay, I'm going to cut here, I'm going to cut there, without knowing what the actual impact is. It's got to be a collective decision about where a reduction would come from, but it really does start with, you know, what are the priorities of the district? What does the administration and the school committee value? I can tell you personally, the, you know, one of the things we have to do, and I think we have done over the years, is respect the individual education of students. So the areas of the budget that are going to impact student needs or student learning should really be the last things that we cut. It's never to say that we're never going to make a cut that way, but I think the, you know, you have to try to hold harmless any cuts that are actually going to impact or impact kids in the classroom. So that would be the last area you would go to, but it would have to be part of a comprehensive review, and it really does all start with your values and priorities.
I just have, I just have one other question. Thank you for that answer. We've talked about partnerships, and I think we all agree that they're extremely important, especially, I think, in the city of Lowell. Our partners, our nonprofits and college and the university and the business community certainly have stepped up to the plate to help us out. And I was certainly impressed with the potential partnerships that you might be developing, some ideas of developing down the road. Can you, could you please share with us a partnership that you might have fostered as, let's say, an administrator in the last ten years or twelve years you yourself have put together?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I mean, again, one of the things that I think we value here in Lowell is that it's the collective work of the organization that really benefits the child. And, you know, Lowell is not about, and I'm not about, you know, I, I, I. So, you know, these aren't things that I did. One of the partnerships that I think, you know, we as a district have created, and I've certainly been involved with, you know, is the Katie's Closet Initiative at a lot of the schools. You know, our kids, again, if you've got that high poverty level, and, you know, three out of four of your kids are having some, you know, income needs, I've seen just tremendous value and benefit from the Katie's Closet Partnership. Even schools that, you know, you wouldn't think would necessarily have a high free reduced lunch population, you know, they have some really needy students. I mean, a lot of our ELL students, a lot of our newcomer students, you know, absolutely it's critically important to them that they have those needs. So I think as a community, that's an example of a partnership that has not only taken off, I mean, it started in one school, and, you know, we've got more than half of a dozen sites, and, you know, it's just an incredible service to kids. Again, you know, when we talked earlier about focusing on the whole child, you know, we have to educate them, but, you know, that is more of the social, emotional, and the health needs of the student, you know, providing them with the proper clothing, and that is just an incredible example, incredible example of how, you know, Lowell comes together and Lowell provides for its students, so that I'm proud of that partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Lang, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a great accomplishment, and I commend you for your diligence, and thank you for applying. But more importantly, thank you for your commitment to the community. I have known you for many years, certainly going back to our Highland basketball days, and I know it's important to me and for individuals in the community to give back, and I think that's important and we try to stress, I certainly have, to our next generation. That being said, you've spent quite a bit of time, mostly your career, in the Lowell Public Schools, which is also commendable. I wanted to start in a letter of recommendation from Superintendent Franco. She references, I just want to just get a little bit more of an explanation as to what she may have referenced, that you're a key player in the development of restructuring plans throughout the district, and it doesn't elaborate anymore, so I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit more what she may have referenced in terms of restructuring plans?
Yeah, I don't know exactly which she was talking to at that point, but I can talk about a few.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that we looked at a few years ago is obviously parent service, parent services and parent engagement. One of the things that I do think is one of my strengths is really looking at, you know, will we kind of determine our opportunity areas or ways to influence a process or make a process more streamlined, both for efficiency and also produce a better product. So as an example, this is probably five, six years ago. Our Family Resource Center, which used to be located on Creek Street, then we moved to the Rogers, now we're back to Merrimack Street, used to be configured in such a fashion that there was an enrollment area, and then there was a separate food services area, and then there was a third transportation area. So a parent would actually have to come in to register their child for school, and they would go and take a ticket, they would take a number, and they would enroll their student. Then they'd have to go get in line at the transportation office and take another ticket, per se, to get busing for their child. Then they'd have to go get in the third line when that was done and go fill out the food services application to get there. It was bizarre that, you know, that families were having to go through all these steps, and it wasn't user-friendly. So we restructured the Family Resource Center really so that all of the agents who work there now service all facets. So you come into the Family Resource and you're greeted and you're given one ticket. And when you go and meet with an individual, they're able to take care of your enrollment and your food and your transportation needs all at the same time. We also used to have, you know, a separate transportation coordinator and a separate food services director and a separate Family Resource Center coordinator, and we're able to restructure that whole department, so it actually now falls under one person. So it streamlined efficiency, it generated cost savings at a time where the budget need was there, and that could be a scenario that Superintendent Franco was referencing.
Right, thank you. I'm just kind of curious, what was your doctoral thesis on?
It was on the implications of collective bargaining on school reform and student achievement.
Oh, very interesting. I was just kind of curious.
I'll get your copy.
Okay, get it to me before the next mediation meeting. So I know that there's been in-depth discussion on sort of the organizational administrative side. I just wanted to just ask you a couple of questions, how comfortable, how knowledgeable you are with requirements of No Child Left Behind, mass achievement, mass achievement gap legislation, Race to the Top, and what do you see as critical steps that this district needs to take to implement these laws and grant opportunities?
Again, I think the key has really been being a partner and a member of the administration team that's had to see these initiatives through. So, you know, with regard to the No Child Left Behind Act, I'm sorry, the Race to the Top Initiative, you know, part of that was really the whole educator evaluation piece, and that was the real impetus that was put into play. So, you know, being at the table, you know, there when it was collectively bargained, when it was actually implemented, you know, I've played a significant role in that. I think one of the areas, you know, that the superintendent needs to focus on going forward is really an advocacy role that I think needs to be prominent, and with regard to both, you know, state and federal mandates, taking a look at the actual mandates that are given to us and trying to, you know, make sure that they're really in line with and they're working for us as opposed to against us when we're trying to move learning. You know, we have to advocate for additional services, as we've talked about, you know, to address some of the needs of our newcomer population. You know, we've got a burgeoning population of special need students that need care. Our low-income students need care and support. So I do think a critical role of the next superintendent is really taking on that advocacy stance, and I think the work of the Urban Superintendents Group that I go to with Superintendent Franco occasionally, and some of the work with the legislature around, you know, bills that may come forward from time to time, and sharing with people how that is actually going to impact our work is going to be critical.
So can you give me a sense of how these federal laws and MCAS mandate present special issues for this district?
How they present special issues? Which one?
Just in terms of...
Well, say, Race to the Top.
Right.
Right? The key with the Race to the Top was really, you know, you had to implement the new educator evaluation system if you were going to buy into that. That changed everything we did. I think in the long run, it changed it for the good, but it didn't come with the resources as often happens when these mandates come out. And, you know, the Race to the Top Initiative came in a time when districts were facing continual budget cuts, and I think at the federal level, the, you know, the federal government was almost kind of hanging that as a carrot out there to get districts to buy in, to go after the money, but then when you get the money, you have to then implement the educator evaluation system. I certainly think the educator evaluation system is a good system. I think it's a step in the right direction, it's all about implementation, but it has absolutely changed the focus of our work because, you know, limited dollars for professional development have had to be targeted towards that implementation. Again, I think it's been successful in Lowell because of the cooperation with the teachers' union in actually implementing that. We had to roll out as a district a whole initiative on how we were actually going to, you know, teachers helped create videos to share staff, to share with staff about how to implement, how to use the new evaluation tool, and how it actually, you know, was used to change practice, as opposed to be used to just kind of judge someone. So that's kind of an example of how one of those mandates has implemented, affected our daily work.
Great, thank you. So can you give some examples of maybe how you've worked with some principals to improve performance and being leaders in their school and how it can bring about change, because I think that is an important role of the superintendent.
Right.
When we have, you know, so many schools, and how do we bring, you know, how do we bring this district up to a higher-tier system than we are?
I think what's, you know, what's key, in my feeling, is, you know, the city of Lowell itself is in a good trajectory, right? The city of Lowell is going in the right direction. The Lowell Public Schools are also going in the right direction. I think the key for us is replicating some of the successes that we've had at the Level One schools and having those successes carry over to the Level Two and Three schools. I was having a conversation with someone, and they said, you know, Revere was a school system this past year, it's an urban school system, and that was the first school system in the state that moved from Level Three to Level Two. And, you know, they said, you know, do you think we can do that? And I said, you know what? Absolutely, we can do that, but we shouldn't stop there. You know, our goal has to be to be a Level One district, and our plans and our commitment has to be moving the district to Level One. And that's going to mean moving all of the schools. I think what's going to be critically important to us, and we did work again with the Merklin School, and that was an incredible turnaround. We have to work proactively, again, we've got to go on the offense here with the building principals, with the union, and actually take a look at those Level Three schools that are struggling right now. We know the successes that were put into place at the, you're doing fine for time. We know the successes that were put in place at the Merklin School. We need to replicate those at the other schools. Part of my work in my dissertation was taking a look at the forty Level Four schools that were underperforming in 2010 and 11 from the state, and what were the actual, you know, bargaining changes or contract language changes that effect your way to change? And the, you know, one of the, there were three key elements. The first was teacher quality, that you had to ensure that the best teacher was in the classroom, you know, every day, and there were a whole set of dynamics that go into that. You know, the second was time for teachers to really work outside of the school day, both in planning and looking at their student work and data, and the folks at the Merklin School did an outstanding job with that. The third was having a real strict look and coherence around what the academic achievement at the school was. What were those goals going to be? We don't typically set up academic goals at schools that aren't underperforming, but we should as a practice, and we need to make explicit those student achievement goals so that everyone knows where we're working. And those goals have to be aligned to Level One status, not Level Two status.
Good, I'm doing good with time, but you're not. So, thank you. No, you've answered my question very thoroughly, so thank you. I do, I do, I'm running out of time. So I've asked this of all the candidates, you probably know how I feel about contracts, I don't think they have worked in the past, they provide too much comfort for the employee, and inevitably, it becomes somewhat of a challenge. We, on the city side, we have, no one works with a contract with the exception of the chief of police. How do you feel about a contract? Would you work without a contract? That doesn't mean that benefits and protections are not there for the employee, that's covered by ordinance for all of our department heads. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think the, when I was first thinking about this, I mean, the position was advertised that it was going to come with a three-year contract, so obviously that was my anticipation going in. I don't want to be working in a district, whether it's here or anywhere else, you know, if a majority of the folks don't want me. You know, if it ever came a time that, you know, I wasn't the right person anymore, it wouldn't be a good working experience for either. I think what's important to me is less the term of the contract or the employment agreement, but I do think you need some kind of an agreement around, because we don't have ordinances in the school department, so you need some kind of an agreement that actually lays out, you know, what the conditions you're working under are, what your expectations of me are, how are you going to evaluate me each year? under are, what your expectations of me are, how you're going to evaluate me each year. So, you know, it's absolutely negotiable. I think, you know, going into this, there's going to be give and takes. Obviously, would I like a contract? Yes. I think, you know, whether it's a contract, an agreement that lays out the terms, I'm not as tied on the length of the term. Just, I do think there needs to be something in writing that spells out our relationship.
And let me just elaborate a little more. I mean, you, we spent an odd amount of time just this year at the outset of, on our, on the former, soon-to-be former superintendent. And it just set a bad tone, I thought, going back and forth. But, you know, moving forward, there is no ordinance, but the superintendent is a department head, so there is coverage. And that's why I bring it up. That's why I raise it. So, is that the end of my time? I'm done. I'm way over. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lang. I do appreciate your time, your responses. I'm the last one, so this concludes the question and answer period portion of the interview. So we would like to invite you to a closing statement.
Great, thank you. I'd actually like to take two seconds, if I could, and go back to the very first question of the night because I wanted to kind of lay out the last tier of my vision for the district. And I stopped a little bit short earlier. You know, we talked about, you know, what my vision would be and what the focus would be. And the first element was obviously improved academic achievement for all kids. The second was, you know, educator quality and really ensuring the best teacher in the classroom at all times. Community engagement was the third and really strengthening those partnerships and, you know, finding innovative ways to move the school system forward. I see, again, that the work with groups such as like Project Learn and pushing that is helpful. I see the partnerships with UMass Lowell as incredibly enticing. I think we're ripe, to be honest with you, for, you know, our work as an urban center and UMass Lowell and the moves that they're making to almost open up a, you know, an urban learning lab, some type of a partnership between the UMass Lowell's Grad School of Ed and our district to really highlight some of the good work that happens in schools and be able to have them work with us to figure out ways to replicate and to build capacity across schools so that, you know, all those practices can be realized by all of our students. And, you know, the fourth, the fourth kind of pillar of my plan was really about expanding those blended learning opportunities that we talked about earlier and expanding enrichment and, you know, after-school offerings. When I look back at the, some of the, you know, my favorite work in the district, it really was around the Community Schools Initiative, which was modeled after Cambridge of working with the city and departments around making, you know, community centers come alive in our schools to extend the school day for kids, to provide some of the wraparound services and the social services that our kids need. That would be a component of my plan. So that was the fourth tier that I wanted to share with you. And really in closing, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, you know, to interview tonight. I have appreciated the process thus far. You know, it's an incredible commitment, the Blue Ribbon Panel that put in time doing this review. I'm thankful to them. I realize this is a lot of nights and hours for you, but this is a critical step for our district. I truly think the, you know, one of the things that's going to make our district strong is the next leader being able to commit to a long-term relationship and a long-term vision for this district. Again, I think I'm at the right point in my career. I'm at the right juncture to be able to commit to the district long-term, you know, to put a 10-year plan in place and actually see it through. And that would be my focus. So I very much thank you for the opportunity. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity. And, you know, again, being a product of the school system, you know, in closing, I was at UMass Lowell in anticipation and getting ready for the graduation from the program. And someone had said, I don't think they realized I was from the Lowell Schools, but they were talking about, you know, Lowell and the great opportunity that we have as a community, excuse me, to, you know, go from a pre-K education all the way up to a doctorate. And I said, you know what? I'm living proof of that. And, you know, if I can bring that to Lowell and I can serve as a role model for our kids to show, you know, that you can start at the Washington School in kindergarten, we didn't have pre-K back then, if you can start in kindergarten and go all the way to UMass Lowell and earn a doctorate, and I as the superintendent, you know, can sit on the graduation stage next year and actually give that message to the graduating seniors, I think that would be an incredible message to give to the kids of Lowell. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity. I very much enjoyed this and I thank you for your consideration.
With that, entertain a motion to recess or adjourn to our next meeting. Will, is tomorrow night, 6:00 PM, and we will ensure that LTC will be here. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Jenner, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned.